All right, it's 8:33, so let's get going. We have Russell Hughes, he is the pastor of the Holy Angels Catholic Church here to give our invocation, and then we will have Katie Enert, who is a Girl Scout of Western Oklahoma from Troop 3021, and she will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would everybody stand?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. Only you know what we are saving out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We all have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can set in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all our efforts and understanding. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter this day. We ask to see Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a citation, because we got an award, our Parks Department got an award, so Doug and your whole team, will you guys come up and join me? We have a citation, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City provides a variety of parks and recreational programs for the use and enjoyment of the public, whereas the mission of the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department is to provide cultural, social, and recreational opportunities to residents and visitors so they can have lifelong enriching experiences. Whereas recently, OKC Parks received the Oklahoma Recreation and Park Society's Gold Medal of Excellence. Whereas the Gold Medal of Excellence is the most prestigious recognition of its type bestowed upon park agencies in Oklahoma. Whereas through an array of criteria, OKC Parks received high marks for its positive impact in the community, excellent staff engagement, public support and citizen involvement, performance and outcome measurements, innovation and creative problem solving. Whereas OKC Parks was the only recipient of the Gold Medal of Excellence in 2019. Therefore David Holt, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby commend and congratulate the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department on receiving the prestigious Gold Medal of Excellence from the Oklahoma Recreation and Park Society.
Give the mayor.
Thank you Vice Mayor and City Council, appreciate the opportunity. I can't be prouder than the folks that are standing up here with me today, the work that we've done over the last several years to make our city's Parks and Recreation Department number one in the state of Oklahoma. On the eve of another one of those great days, December 10th, in the MAPS4, I think it's really important for the folks in this town to know how important this organization is to the city, how important MAPS4 will be for the next generation of our young people. As the young lady from the Girl Scouts of America was here today, and the fact that we help hundreds of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts achieve their awards and better their lives to better our lives, again, being the number one organization in the state of Oklahoma, I couldn't be prouder than the folks that are standing here with me. And of course, we couldn't do it without a great city manager, assistant city manager, and you, the elected folks, participating with us and guiding our ways through your policies and wisdom. So we want to thank you all for helping us achieve this award. So thank you.
All right, there's nothing from the office of the mayor today, so I'll look for a motion on item four of the general council proceedings.
I have one correction.
Okay.
In, I don't remember what page it was, sorry. Page 38, the first paragraph, Classon 10 pin, I just wanted to make sure we correct that for Classon North Highland Park, as far as the neighborhood is concerned. So that's, other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. And do we need to make an actual motion to make that amendment, or can we do that administratively?
Just move it as corrected. We're just receiving the minutes today, we will approve them on December.
Okay, sounds good. So the motion is good, we're ready to cast our votes, all right. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Now we are on to item five, request for uncontested continuances.
Yes sir, on page seven, item 7J, staff has requested that we defer this item to December the 3rd. And then on page 18, on item 9A5, PUD 1730, all the parties involved with this one have agreed to defer this item to January the 7th. So we defer to January the 7th. This is item 9A5, PUD 1730. On page 22, item 9K1, all of these items that I'll list now, we will strike from the agenda. Item A, 2407 North Classon Boulevard, the owner is secured. Item D, 2601 Normandy Street, the owner is secured. Item G, 8104 South Shields Boulevard, the owner is secured. Item J, 2109 Southeast 13th Street, the owner is secured. Item L, 3617 Northwest 15th Street, the owner is secured. Item Q, 3308 Southwest 39th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 713 Southwest 48th Street, the owner has secured. And then, still under item nine, this is under item 9L1, under abandoned buildings, page 23, all of these will also be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 2407 North Classon Boulevard, the owner is secured. Item B, 2601 Normandy Street, the owner is secured. Item E, 8104 South Shields Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item H, 2109 Southeast 13th Street, the owner has secured. And item L, 713 Southwest 48th Street, the owner has secured. That is all the items that I have.
Okay. Move on to item six, revocable permits. The first one is item A, it's with Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to hold the Bricktown Parklet on December 2nd through February 29th. Is there anybody who is representing that event? No, okay. So it's in Ward 7, so council member Nice?
Yes, looking forward to what this parklet is going to bring. So with that, I move for approval.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Mine's not showing up. Can we just keep, can we just move on? I'm voting yes, all right. I'll just say no if I vote no, how about that? All right, moving on to item B, which is also with the Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership to hold the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival on November 29th. I'm assuming there's nobody representing that. Oh, there is, all right. Okay.
Hi, I'm Holly Hoiler with Downtown OKC. This is going to be the 18th Annual Tree Lighting Festival on Friday, November 29th, from 5 to 7 p.m. This is a longstanding community tradition where we kick off the holiday season for the city. It is free and open to everyone, and includes photos with Santa, letters to the North Pole, face painting, food trucks, and a variety of live performances before the mayor counts down the lighting of the Christmas tree. This year's performances include Lyric Theater's cast of A Christmas Carol, Academia OKC's Intermediate Mariachi Group, the Native Women's Praise Choir, Toni Foster Jr., Candace Duke, and JB. The majority of the programming will take place on the third base plaza of Bricktown Ballpark, so we are requesting to close Mickey Mantle Ave from Flaming Lips Alley to Wanda Jackson Way from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. for setup and event safety. And security will be provided by the Bricktown Police. Mayor isn't here, but I would just like to say thank you to him and his office from us at Downtown OKC for his participation and support.
Cool. I'm guessing he will be there.
Yes.
This one's in Ward 7 also, so council member Nice?
I must say, I'm excited about this. Last year was my first time going to the tree lighting, and I took my mom, so she was just as excited to see the diversity and just the inclusion of what this tree lighting brings for our city. So with that, I say please come out November 29th and enjoy with us, and see some great entertainers, and warm your belly with some hot chocolate. So for that, I move for approval.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Moving on to item C, this is a revocable right-of-way use permit with In Motive Oklahoma to hold the OKC Turkey Tracks on Thanksgiving Day, and I think Carrie has signed up.
Good morning. Yes, this is our ninth OKC Turkey Tracks. It's Oklahoma City's premier Thanksgiving Day event. We have a one-mile fun run at 8:30, 5K at 9 o'clock, and we are proud to be partnering with the Marine Corps for Toys for Tots. We've got a goal to reach 1,000 toys to be donated. Last year, we averaged about 2,600 runners, and have had a tremendous growth year over year. Our swag includes long-sleeve hooded jackets and finisher medals for all, so it's a great family tradition, and if anybody's interested, it's okc turkietracks.com for more information or to register.
Cool. That's in Ward 6, so council member Nice?
Well, I will say, so I live near where this is held every year, and it's always very fun to get up and walk my dog and see everyone in their fun Thanksgiving turkey-themed outfits, so I will move for approval.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
We're going to recess the council meeting and convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There's a number of items on that. Are there any questions on any of these items? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes, and passes unanimously. Adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Looks like there's four items on that. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And we'll adjourn the OC PPA and convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll, but we, okay. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene as the council with the consent docket at item 7.
And we'll have presentations on item AE and on item AO.
Okay, and is there any other items that we want to pull out to discuss? No, all right. You guys are making it easy on me, huh? All right. Well, I guess let's start with AE.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On item AE and the consent docket today, we actually have an implementation plan for the Better Streets, Safer City program. This won't be the first amendment that we have done, but this will be the most recent. And as we just review a little bit of the history of Better Streets, we set up the program with the advisory board to make recommendations to the city council for a number of projects. The council receives and approved those, and we move those projects forward. Today, we've completed a number of projects. We have a couple that require some budget revisions, but we also have the board proposing some additional sidewalk projects for your consideration. It's been a while since we've done an implementation plan update, so this is the document that we use as the guide for the program. So it outlines the project budgets, scopes, and schedules, and so this is what staff is utilizing in putting those projects into place. And we anticipated periodic updates, and so with that, the board continues to evaluate. We do receive recommendations, those are considered each month at their meeting, but as we get a number of projects together, we come to you and present these to the council. This is really just a summary of the funding that was anticipated as a part of the program, $240 million with the largest category in street resurfacing, but there are the five project categories for Better Streets that also include the streetscapes, the sidewalks, the trails, and also the bike facilities. So this month, November of 2019, the implementation plan update includes three categories of item, street resurfacing budget revisions, street resurfacing project closeouts, and some new sidewalk project recommendations for your consideration. We have this question that is asked each month by the Better Streets Advisory Board members, and as we move forward and we ask how much of the money has been authorized to date, this is the different project categories in the totals before the amendment that has been authorized. So without consideration today, about 81% of the arterial street resurfacing funds that have been allocated to the program have been authorized towards projects, so there's about 20% remaining. 90% of the residential, 97% of the street enhancements, 89 of sidewalk, 91 of trails, and 53 of bike infrastructure. So not all of the projects have been authorized, but many of them have nearly utilized their totals, but others were waiting for additional recommendations, and I anticipate the rest of the recommendations to be made in early 2020. With the November 2019 adjustments, what you're going to see is that the arterial resurfacing is actually going to drop today with your approval, because we're actually returning money back to the program. Residential slightly changes, there are no changes to street enhancement, bicycle, or trail, but you're going to see the sidewalk increase slightly with the recommendations that I'm getting ready to show you. So street resurfacing projects, there are two, let me start with this. This is a map and an overview of the 113 different projects that have been authorized to date under the Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax Program. The colors help identify their category. The blue is future, red is under construction, and green is complete. So there's a number of projects that have been completed in 2019. There's several that are in construction. All those in red are current active work zone projects across Oklahoma City. And the blue are those that we're going to be completing hopefully here in the next month or so, but that's why we're going to need to do additional street authorizations in early 2020. Two of those projects, those two that you see listed here, are slightly running over their budgets. We find that when we get into the field, there's sometimes unforeseen conditions, and we need to make the asphalt thicker, there's additional repairs that might be needed. So of those projects, two of them need to slightly increase those budgets, and those are shown here. So PC 654 has a $200,000 increase, and then PC 664 has an increase as well. And these are the only two in the plan today that need increases. Probably more informative is that we have a number of projects that are shown on this list. There are a total of 36 projects that actually came in under budget, and the total under is about $12 million. And so this is money that will go back into the Better Streets funds for reallocation to new projects across Oklahoma City. So these are all complete, and you have actually several of these that either have been considered or possibly on the council agenda today, so when you start seeing on the agenda final acceptance of an arterial street resurfacing project, that's our note that that project is 100% complete. There's one other category today that's in the amendment, sidewalks. These are the active sidewalk projects. The color coding is very similar. The blue is future, not yet constructed, the green is complete, and the red is under construction. So we have a lot of sidewalk construction within the city at the moment. The sidewalks are also broken into four general categories, and so when we look at sidewalk categories, and this is as advised by the board, we're looking at PPA, the pedestrian priority areas, and these are all following Plan OKC and Bike Walk OKC. There's also categories of parks, transit, and schools. This is the recommended PPA sidewalks for additional sidewalks. There's 19 total on this list for an increase, or I should say, an authorization of $6 million. This is the parks sidewalks, there's 12 new park sidewalks recommended, authorizing $1 million, that's in the current funds for Better Streets, Safer City. The transit sidewalks, there are four new ones, $800,000. And then this last list, school sidewalks for school connectivity, 18 projects at $3.4 million. So again, this is a plan update, obviously a lot of work that's underway. These are going to add additional sidewalk projects citywide, and we'll make the budget adjustments to the two street projects. We're prepared to also make sure that we take credit for the projects that were completed under the budget. And things that you can expect in 2020 moving forward, additional PIP amendment that will come in the spring, most likely with the ending of the sales tax in March, have then the full total of what's been collected for Better Streets, and so we'll know exactly how much is available for projects. One thing I might report that was reported to the board this month is that we are actually receiving the sales tax over our projected total. This month's report included a projected total, it was approximately 13 million over our target projections. So the board will be very busy in the spring with those additional revenues if they hold true through March for additional authorizations. We have an annual report that is underway, which we will be presenting to the council shortly, and then of course, for more information, we have a lot of this information online at OKC.gov/BeterSafer. With that, I can answer any questions you might have about the amendment this morning.
For those overages, what is the process for deciding what's next, what to use those for?
So when we surplus the money and bring that back? So you may recall, the advisory board set up a priority-based system where there's lists of projects. So each project category has a different priority methodology. For streets generally, it's a very low PCI and a high traffic with work orders. For the streetscapes, bike, trail, and sidewalk, we're really following the outline of Bike Walk OKC. So they're literally going down through that list of priority projects that were determined earlier by the board. But as I mentioned, as we kind of go forward, we're receiving some additional project requests, and so those are being considered now too, but those will go to the board first. A recommendation will be made, and then we'll bring those to the council for your consideration and approval.
Is it possible to see some of those requests as far as those areas, and just to compare and contrast if there are some that we see as priorities as council members to take to our advisory board?
So we work very closely with the planning department, and Director Jeff Butler and I could absolutely meet with you and get a list to you of what those look like today. So we can do that, yes.
Eric, I just want to make a comment real quick. It's, I know for me personally, it's real easy to drive down a terrible road and realize I'm driving down a terrible road, but when I'm driving down a road that's been refinished, I don't even think about it, I just enjoy the nice smooth ride. And I've got to tell you, it's, I know we still have a long, long ways to go, but I personally am seeing a lot of, a lot of streets that have been redone that have just been fantastic. You know, Walker heading south, some of 29th Street over there, just some different areas like that, that used to, you would drive down it and kind of have to grit your teeth so you didn't break a tooth, but you guys are getting a lot of good work done, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Eric. Next presentation is AO, and I think it's Wiley Williams is going to be presenting that one.
Yes, this is on an agreement, this, there's a lot of detail in here, it's why we wanted to do a presentation, just a lot of things we're trying to do. This is an agreement that was actually entered into by the council in, I think, July of 2018. Wiley's just going to give an overview of all the things that are moving here, just so you have an idea of what we're putting into this.
Some of the, you were not here on the council when this agreement was entered into, but it started as a result of Bank First being able to buy the old Liberty Tower Chase Bank building that was in a great state of disrepair, had not been maintained very well, and they're spending millions of dollars to rehabilitate that. As part of their due diligence, they realized there was not enough parking, and that was one of the criticisms the prior owner had, trying to attract tenants, was not enough local parking to take care of the tenants. So they entered into the agreement, first of all, to buy the Santa Fe Parking Garage, a joint venture with Continental Resources. And then when they bought the building, with the rehabilitating now, they saw a future need for additional parking, and wanted to buy the west half of our Bricktown parking lot that we own. And that was all started in August of 2018. The resolution before you today does three things. It approves the form of six documents that need to be signed at closing, and it authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute those. The documents consist of two easements and four contract documents that divide the current Bricktown parking lot into two, an east side and a west side, and gives what the west side to this new joint venture between Bank First and Bricktown Parking, Inc., who has a 25-year lease on the parking lot, and into, and then we're entering into a new agreement with Bricktown Parking Investors for the east lot. And this resolution allows all that to happen and for it to proceed to closing. As well as we try to, there's always some little tweaks that need to be made to some of these documents at the end, but nothing substantive will change. You argue about legal descriptions and final things, so. This is a diagram of, not a very good one, I admit, but of the Bricktown parking lot. The yellow line at the bottom is the Walnut Street Bridge, and they are buying, the part going up the screen is the west parking lot. And they are buying everything under the Walnut Street Bridge, half of it up to the railroad tracks at the top. One of the things the city wanted out of this agreement was we wanted an easement for a future rail service across the property. And you could imagine, we spent most of this past year negotiating and trying to reach an agreement on an easement. Has not been an easy process, but we had a lot of people interested in what really was going to happen there. And they are going to build a garage, a parking garage structure on that property, up where those, it's covered parking in this diagram, but that will be turned into a parking garage. And to make this easement work and not affect their garage has taken a lot of time in the development. The easement we're getting for the railroad track is the yellow line that starts along the railroad track and goes up to, toward the north, toward the west. The next, I think, diagram shows it better, one more. It's a 75-foot easement, and we have shared this easement with the Regional Transit Authority, and their lawyer was involved in helping to draft some of the language. So we feel like they're satisfied with it. Jason Fairbrush of COPTA is satisfied with it, and I think we've gotten the best we can do on that. Then the other easement is, we discovered that we had a large water line Then the other easement is, we discovered that we had a large water line and a large sewer line on this property that we'd never reserved an easement for. So the easement addresses those properties. And then the other agreements, like I said, there are two contracts and two memorandums of contracts assigning the leases and dividing them up into a west lot and an east lot. And we'd appreciate your approval of this item so we can move forward to closing. And I'll answer any questions if you have.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah. You have a second? Oh, yeah, that's right. Councilman has a question.
So just to clarify, make sure I understand, this, as it is, affects in no way any future regional transit authority rail coming in as we start moving toward that conversation in the next couple of years?
And as he's going back to the mic, that was one of the things that we had really tried to work through with this, that we were trying to be careful of, is since we already own this property, and we knew that the concept was that the rail would have, if we get the regional rail going to the west, I mean, to the east, that it would have to cross this property, that we wanted to make sure, and Wiley's been working back and forth with their attorneys for some time, to make sure that we had sufficient right-of-way or easement there, that make sure that whatever structure was built didn't interfere with that.
And that it won't interfere with their parking garage and use of the property. They also want to be able to have ingress and egress under the, it's going to be a tall railroad bridge, if you could imagine, that's going to tie up to the Santa Fe Depot. And they want to be able to go under and continue to park cars and things under that tow.
So we wanted to ensure we had the easement, but they had the ability to use it for the parking, for the purposes they intended. And that was also why, on the easement, Wiley had worked very closely with the Regional Transit Authority, talking with the members from Oklahoma City and some of the other members, as well as the attorney that represents them, to make sure that we were doing what we could, to ensure we had an easement there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Francis, we have a motion and a second for the consent docket. Okay. Is there any other questions on the consent docket before we vote? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Move on to item eight, the concurrence docket. We can take all of these with one motion? Or does anybody have any questions on any individual item? Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Then move on to item nine, which is the items requiring separate votes. We start off with a bunch of zoning cases. First one is PC 10608 in Ward seven. Councilmember Nice.
Yes, ma'am. Is the applicant present? Will you come up for me? I just had a couple of questions. Maybe you can answer them for me. And this is for 100 Northeast 28th Street from R4 General Residential District to I-1 Light Industrial District.
Yes. The surrounding zoning is predominantly I-2 to the west, north. It's currently zoned R4. To the south, it's zoned R4, but is not currently being used as that. And the applicant would just like to zone this to a little bit lighter, I-1, and to kind of accompany the area. It's just an office warehouse use.
Okay. I guess my main question, due to it being next to the residence that it will be close to, is will this be operated as far as, even though it is a warehouse, will they be accessing this during the daytime, or is it all hours? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, it's going to be daytime use. And they have the certain setback requirements that they have to meet adjacent, and screening requirements adjacent to the residential as well.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item number two is an item in Ward one. It's changing section from R1 to a split of C3 and O2. It had a recommendation from Planning Commission unanimously to approve it. There hadn't been any protest, and with that, I move for approval. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Move on to item A3, which is in Ward eight. I think Councilman Stone is going to take this one.
Yeah. Francis, has anyone signed up to speak on this? This item's taking a tract of land from R1 back to agriculture, so no protest? Yes, sir. Oh, okay.
If you have any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for him? If not, I would move for approval.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Move on to item four, which is in Ward five at 9001 South Fairview Drive. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an item to request zoning to commercial use on Southwest 89th Street. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. No protesters. Francis, anyone? Okay. So I would move for approval.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item five has been deferred to January 7th. So moving on to item six, which is SPUD 1134 in Ward two. There is somebody signed up, so Councilman Cooper.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kelly Work, and I'm an attorney here representing the applicants who include the owner of the property at 2445 Northwest 39th Street, which is an LLC, and then also Boulevard Media, and Mr. Rhett Cooney, general manager of Boulevard Media, is with me here today as well. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. This item was heard before you, as you may recall, on the 24th of September, and it was continued after some comments from the representative for Lamar Outdoor Advertising, Mr. Bill Hickman. And I understand that there is a representative here from Lamar today that may want to make some comments. But I wanted to just briefly explain what is being requested here. This is about a one-acre site. It's located halfway between Pennsylvania and May Avenue on the north side of I-44. So it fronts on the Northwest 39th Street frontage road. The existing zoning is C3 today. It has, there's a building on the property that was built in the 1960s, is an office building. Most recently, it has been leased to a church, and that use continues today. In connection with this request, it is an SPUD request, and we did, as part of the SPUD process, we did eliminate a number of the C3 commercial uses that might otherwise be considered objectionable. We eliminated automobile sales, gasoline and repair services, drive-through restaurants, pawn shops, payday loan stores, outdoor and personal storage. So those were uses that would otherwise be permitted under the C3 ordinance that we've eliminated under the terms of this PUD. And then, as we discussed in September, we have added as an additional permitted use a single non-accessory billboard sign, which would be located at the west edge of the existing parking lot. So it would not prevent this site from being redeveloped for some other commercial use in the future. The application, we think, is appropriate to allow this EMD, non-accessory billboard sign as it sits there fronting on I-44, which at this location is a six-lane divided highway. And of course, the city has permitted a number of billboards along this stretch of I-44 between Penn and May. There are four that, in that stretch between, on the south side of the highway, and then there is one existing on the north side of the highway. And as we mentioned back in September when we were here, Lamar, who was appearing in opposition to our application, actually has four of those permitted billboards. Now, a number of those were permitted back when a billboard was a use permitted in C3 prior to the amendment to the sign code and to the zoning code. And now, if you want to do, in order to have a non-accessory sign as a permitted use under the zoning ordinance, it would either have to be C4, which is a pretty intense, the most intense, commercial district, or I-2 or I-3. So in those districts, they are permitted uses. And in order to otherwise permit a non-accessory billboard sign, it would have to be as part of this negotiated, either an SPUD or a PUD process. We do meet, the city under the zoning ordinance and the sign code does have separation requirements for billboards along divided highways. We do meet that requirement. There's a 1,200-foot separation requirement in those areas. We meet that. That's actually greater than the state's separation requirement of 1,000 feet. And we actually have received our permit from ODOT for this location, subject, of course, to us receiving approval from the city. As you can see, well, I think it's reflected there. You see, there's about a 70-foot-wide concrete line, open concrete-lined drainage channel along our west boundary. Now, in the process of the negotiation of the SPUD, as I mentioned in September, we did place some conditions on this EMD sign to minimize the impact. And those include that we limited the maximum level of illumination by 40%. So under the city's ordinance and both under the, and under the state regulations, there's a maximum illumination level. It's 500 nits. So essentially, a nit is a measure of candle power. So the PUD limits the illumination level to 300 nits between dusk and dawn. So that would be a 40% reduction from what would otherwise be allowed. We also will require that there be two-foot screens installed along the north side of the sign faces so that it would restrict light from straying to the north. And then we also provided that we would rotate the sign a minimum of 10 degrees counterclockwise so it would be more facing the interstate. The, one thing that I want to mention is that there was some discussion by the Lamar representative, by Mr. Hickman, in September that was suggesting that this was somehow something that was novel and unprecedented and something to be feared, to do this approach of allowing a non-accessory billboard sign as part of an SPUD or a PUD. And so we did a little bit of research on that, and I included that information in a letter that I emailed to you all. But the earliest example we found was from 2007, which is at 116 Northwest 60th Street, which is a location just south of Northwest 63rd Street on the west side of Broadway Extension. And interestingly, that was done for the benefit of a Lamar Outdoor Advertising billboard. So Lamar, at least, has been aware that this procedure is possible, at least since 2006, when that application was submitted. So there has not been, since that time, a flood of these, as Mr. Hickman was suggesting, would occur if a non-accessory sign was allowed to be included as a permitted use in an SPUD. We included a couple of other recent examples, one at 10407, just south of Hefner Road on the west side of the Broadway Extension, that the council approved in May of 2019. And there's a Griffin Outdoor Sign at that location. And then the council approved another one on July 16 of this year at 908 Northeast 63rd Street, so just west of Kelly, also along I-44. That was approved, that SPUD was approved by the council in July, and there is a Tyler Outdoor Billboard at that location. So this is not something that is unprecedented in this particular case. The question really, in our view, is, is this an appropriate location for a non-accessory billboard sign? And we submit to you that it is. We're there fronting on a six-lane divided interstate highway. The city has permitted four on the south side between Penn and May, and one other on the north side. This would be the second non-accessory billboard sign on the north side. The other one is to the west, near May Avenue. The opposition that you heard in September and May here today from Lamar, in our view, really relates to Lamar's efforts to prevent a smaller competitor from entering the Oklahoma City market, where Lamar, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, remains the dominant presence. Lamar advertises on their website that they have 2,033 sign displays available, billboard displays available in the Oklahoma City area. Boulevard Media is, has come into the Oklahoma City market. They own and/or operate a total of 19 signs. But Lamar is doing everything they can to prevent companies like Boulevard Media from coming into the market. And you're seeing, I think, in the actions of Lamar recently, what they're, that they are aggressively seeking other sign locations, and they're aggressively seeking to prevent competitors from coming in and getting a position in the market. And that's, in our view, what Lamar's opposition relates to in our case, in that it is not about Lamar professing and some sort of sincere civic interest and concern about signs in Oklahoma City. It's more about Lamar trying to preserve their competitive advantage. Based on our calculation, Lamar controls in excess of 90% of the Oklahoma City market. So I think they would like to keep it that way. We're seeking, we would ask the council just to keep the focus on whether or not this is an appropriate location for a non-accessory sign in connection with this SPUD. And we submit to you that it is, and that with the conditions that have been put in place in our negotiations with the city staff and with the Planning Commission, that it will be appropriate. And we, as I mentioned before, we did receive unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. There was no opposition at the Planning Commission at any point through that stage. So we would request your approval. I want to invite Mr. Cooney to come up, if he would choose to, to make brief remarks, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. We've been in the market since 2011, and I think we're a good corporate citizen and try and follow the rules and the regulations put out by both the city and the states and the different municipalities. I think it's a little unfair when the Goliath comes in and tries to hold us down on policies and procedures that they've used in the past. And we're just trying to live within the law and conduct our business and try and grow our business a little bit, and just appreciate your consideration on this, and hope that you'll look at this location on its own merits. Thank you.
We're happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
We do have somebody else signed up to talk. Do you have a question that you want to ask now? Yeah, go for it.
Yes, thank you. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
So, there's an... So there's an owner of this entire property that includes the building that's currently used by a church, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so they are just entering into a lease to allow a sign to be added to their property, is that correct?
Typically, that would be the case. I have not been involved in those negotiations between the owner, but typically, there would be a leasehold interest that the sign company would have, and they would then pay rent to the owner of the property for that location.
Can you confirm that's the arrangement?
Yes, sir. We have a leasehold interest in the property and share the revenue with the property owner.
Okay. And then at the end of that lease, they may or may not elect to renew it?
Correct.
It's just up to negotiations?
Correct.
Okay.
And at that point, we would, you know, if they chose not to renew, then we would come in and take the sign down.
Okay. Thank you. Kelly, can you tell me, how long did the planning commission consider your zoning request? I mean, was it a lengthy hearing or fairly short?
It was short.
Okay.
It was fairly short. I mean, it was not extended over several council meetings. There were, there was a continuance or two, as I recall, to negotiate with the staff because the staff had made some comments. So we did have negotiation with the staff to try to address their concerns. But by the time we arrived for a final hearing before the council, we felt that we had addressed that all of the concerns that the staff had raised.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of comments. I know the spuds that were used as examples were the ones that were in Ward 7, so I just want to make clarification. The one in May was a brand-new sign, but the one that we approved in July was not. It was not a brand-new sign. That was an existing sign that they already had. They just wanted a bigger sign. So I just want to make sure we have clarification as to those spuds that were approved during those two timeframes since they were mentioned.
All right. Eric Kayott, probably destroyed your last name, but...
Eric Kayott with Lamar, 123 Northwest 50th. A couple of quick points. So the one that he was referring to us on Northwest 60th years ago, it's a condemnation case by the state to slide our sign back. So it was a net-zero location. It wasn't an additional add-on. Does that make sense? I don't know if that... And there have been a couple of others in the last year or so, and two items from now, there's another spud just like this. So there is kind of a trend. I hope we could look at that. So anyways, make this kind of quick. But as previously heard from our attorney, Mr. Hickman, we unequivocally ask you to deny the spud for you today. So there are many glaring issues the city has to consider. Most important is the intent of the app. It's simply to circumvent the city's sign code. I mean, why do we have a sign code in place? So additionally, this app contradicts the city's comprehensive sign plan, or comprehensive plan, the Plan OKC. So that very plan is referenced on, obviously, every single rezoning action with a staff recommendation. Staff recommendation on this one, in quote, said mitigation measures could include eliminating the sign. Even if the spud was allowed or approved today, so C3 only allows for a maximum of 300-square-foot sign, well, they're asking for 672, obviously double or over double. So in the spud and the staff reports, and this is in our staff reports, under the plan conformance consideration, it says, "Plan OKC contemplates a reduction of sign clutter through future sign change, code changes and eliminating, or limiting the number of freestanding signs." So I'm just not clear how this aligns with that statement if this was approved. So another thing, the council's own hesitation and comments, when we've last heard this spud the last couple of times, a couple of comments said, "Does need further consideration. See if it could limit signs throughout the whole city. Hear from planning how it fits into beautifying Oklahoma City. Like to hear from planning about what we're going to do to reduce sign pollution, and we're not going to keep approving billboards." So those comments with the hesitation over those last meetings, you know, we were told that city wanted to take a deeper look, deeper dive into what's going on exactly for these one-off rezoning requests, you know, solely for billboards. So one of the last meetings, there are multiple comments about reducing the number of billboards. I mean, I hope you can agree that approving this spud is in complete opposition of that. Another thing that we made a comment about, so FHWA regulations, if a city, so I'll just read you the bulletin. It says, "FHWA now has the option of penalizing the local jurisdiction that annexes or spot or strip zones areas adjacent to specific highways, primarily for the purpose of permitting outdoor advertising structures." I mean, that's not a good look for the city. I mean, that's obviously what they asked. And I'll read, in quote, from the planning commission by the applicant, in quote, they said, "The reason for this spud application is to request approval to add an additional permitted use, a non-accessory billboard sign, and that's what we were requesting approval for, to the C3 use, which was the existing use before, and development regulations would continue to apply with that single additional use." So billboard-only, I think we get that. So if these get approved, obviously my company, and there are going to be other companies that are going to be right back here in front of you looking to rezone partials of property just for outdoor advertising. And we're going to expect the same treatment. We hope that we get the same votes. So it just creates a measure of copycats. So be aware, there are others in the pipeline. I don't know if you've seen them yet, but there are others in the pipeline, not just the one here today, but there are other ones behind that as well. I just, I'm not sure if that's what your city wants. So with that, we ask you to deny this, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you. One more time, your name?
Eric Kayott.
Eric, your last name?
Kayott.
Kayott?
Yeah, it's...
Thank you, Mr. Kayott, for your perspective. How many billboards does your client have along that stretch on the south side of the road? One more time, I forget.
On the south side, in that mile, I think, three.
Three?
Yeah. And they've all been legally permitted as well.
Mm-hmm. Do you know much about the street that's there from 39th and Penn up to May? Do you know much about where your signs are located, the history of that street?
Well, I mean, to some regard. And then, obviously, I heard, I think it was some of your comments last time, just there's a history behind it.
But your client and you all didn't know that history prior to putting in those signs, is that correct?
Well, I mean, many of those signs have been there before. We inherited them. We actually didn't build them.
That's all I...
I mean, they all, they didn't go in at one time or anything like that.
Sure. That's all. Thank you so much.
I have a question for staff about the idea that these spuds are being used to circumvent the sign code. I'm just curious about what staff would say in response to that. Are there other cases in which spuds are used to circumvent codes that we have?
Absolutely. There's nothing unique or peculiar about this. Signs are negotiated with almost every putt or spud that's done. So it's common.
It's a convenient way for them to apply for a sign like this without having to apply for C4, which carries more intensive use or industrial. So that's why it's being used this way.
What are you going to do?
Excuse me. When I was a child, my parents drove from Midwest City to Oklahoma City using the backroads, like Memorial Road, and I hated them for it. I was like, "Just get on the interstate and get there quicker." And now I get it. I think we are going way too fast as a people, and we have just, that history is not just LGBT history on 39th Street, it's Route 66. And I think, in a lot of ways, we made a big, big mistake as a country in the 50s when we so heavily subsidized the construction of our highways. We've made everything convenient, and our public health outcomes are speaking to the results of that. That area, right now, there are business owners and homeowners who are working so hard to slow us all back down and honor the history of Route 66 and the LGBT history that is in that area. I do not think, well, before I say that, I want to thank Mr. Work. You've been very kind. You've been very thoughtful and informative. You asked, however, is this an appropriate location? I do not believe it is because, right now, we're in the midst of a revitalization of this area where we are putting in wider sidewalks and trees to do everything we can to slow things down and make it safer over there. And I do not think that another billboard needs to be along that stretch of interstate right by that historic area. I will also say, I find it, as someone who believes pretty strongly in a capitalist society, that we're in an era where one company can control a market. And I would hope that the rest of the city would find troubling that fact as well. So I would actually, right, I would actually request that we deny this, but it is not because of anything that Mr. Work has done. I just do not feel this is an appropriate place for a billboard as we are trying to revitalize that area, and I stand by every single comment I said today. I would request to deny it, and I would hope the rest of the council understands that it is not an appropriate fit for this area as well.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any more comments or questions? Yep.
Be interested, unless I missed my guess on this, I see Mr. Butler back there. The planning commission looked at this and unanimously approved it. Am I on the right?
Yes.
That's great. Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you speak to that, sir? And why did the planning commission feel that this was appropriate before we vote?
Jeff Butler, planning director of the planning commission, did recommend approval, and it was based mainly, the conditions were important to them, the fact that it was limited and the number of nits, the fact that the louvers were placed on there to protect the single-family, the residential neighborhood, and the fact that it was rotated. Based on those conditions, they felt it was appropriate.
Am I correct, then, coming to the conclusion that the people that are opposed to this, other than councilman, but the protester came up was from a competitor, not from the neighbors or any of the business operators or owners in that area?
I'll let JJ speak to that. I don't recall if we had protesters from the neighborhood. We did not.
Jeff, before you have a seat, and thank you for sharing that perspective, you and I have worked together on the revitalization project at 39th and Penn, is that correct?
Absolutely.
At any point during that discussion, did the good people who own private property over there, did any of the people who have worked to preserve either Route 66 history or the LGBT history, did at any point in time did they say, "We need a billboard"?
Not that I'm aware of.
Was there ever any discussion of a billboard?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is it common when someone receives in the mail that, from that 300 feet, or when a development's proposed and they see the 300 feet, is it common that someone might see a billboard on there and go, "Ooh, I'm going to go down to City Hall and have my opinion heard"?
There are many times where a billboard, excuse me, is not, you know, it kind of depends on the neighborhood, and there are many times where a billboard is not perceived as being appropriate for neighborhoods. So there are often, I don't know how often, but there are often protests.
In this instance, as the council person, I feel very strongly, very strongly, that the people in Ward 2 elected me to represent them in their interest. And I believe that the work I have done with the 39th Street District to revitalize that area, specifically yesterday when they finalized the plans on what that will look like, never did they say billboard. In fact, the only billboard that they have ever been interested in is the one that says, "Welcome, 39th Street." And it stands tall within the area as a welcoming thing. And that's the only billboard that's there, that they have ever, ever asked for. And so I just don't, I don't see the need. I do not see the need. And it's nothing personal of Mr. Work. It's just not appropriate to this area, and...
So, councilman, sorry, that was very informal. So my question to that, though, is, so I get, I know that there's like a history with the south side of 39th, but does that really translate up to the north side?
That is a wonderful question. Thank you, councilperson. So I had to think about this quite a bit. I never thought I would spend so much time thinking about billboards. I really didn't. So that is a wonderful question. So the revitalization project that's happening on 39th Street will take place from 39th and Penn down to Young's. Young's is right there where that bridge is. Right now, a lot of homeless folk call that bridge home. They sleep under it. They also call the one at Penn and I-44 home. And that hits me really hard because in the LGBT community, 40% of youth homelessness is LGBT. Too many of their parents and grandparents are kicking them out of their homes, they have a different interpretation of their sacred text, and then they end up living under that street, under that bridge. With Maps 4 and the mayor's beautification project, he has identified I-44 from Portland to Klasen as one of the beautification places, which means that bridge could have public art. That means that that bridge could be well-lit under it, so it's a walkable pathway. Same at 44 and Penn. And that means that there will come a time over the next decade, as we revitalize that area and as that bridge itself becomes walkable underneath it, that people will actually, developers will want to develop on the other side of that interstate. Because really, the space between Penn and Young's, there's not that much more in terms of infill we can do. They will try and squeeze everything they can over there in terms of the business, right? They will. But at some point, someone's going to go on the other side of this street. They will go there, and they will go as far as to where, see that blue line right there? That kind of, the concrete ditch in the ground? I promise you, there will come a time in the next decade where developers are going to develop along that side because the people on 39th will have safe, walkable, well-lit passage under Young's. That's coming. It won't be tomorrow. It won't be next year. But that's coming. And I feel strongly I need to set aside that land to preserve it. I also am aware that by approving this billboard there, that it's not going to prevent further development. I understand that. However, what it will do, it will be an imposing, tall figure for all the walkers, all the people who are down there. And anything that that developer builds over there to scale a one- or two-story affordable housing, one-to-two-story bookstore, coffee shop, restaurant, you will have a tall billboard standing down over you. And I just do not think that is an appropriate fit for this area. Wonderful question. Thank you for that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could I just have a couple of moments just to respond to some of the comments that have been made?
Sure. And then I think we'll probably go ahead and vote.
Just very briefly. I just, I want to express my appreciation, first of all, for Councilman Cooper, for your comments and your, certainly, your commitment to represent your constituents and your interest in the history of the area along 39th Street. And I, but I do just want to point out that, that the, as I understand, that the beautification improvements that are planned for that area along 39th Street will primarily focus on the area between Penn and Young's, and which, of course, is south of the interstate. And at this location, of course, we're on the north side, as you mentioned, of the divided highway, and we're about the equivalent of about two blocks west of Young's. So we're both on the north side and about two blocks west. And Mr. Cooney just mentioned to me that they, as a sign operator doing business in Oklahoma City that would be hoping to do business in this area, would certainly be willing to participate... be willing to participate with the city in, in having their sign be part of the celebration of that community, that area, and the efforts. So, I mean, we would certainly be open to that, and we're certainly open to further negotiations about, you know, how the sign would be constructed and that sort of thing. But we just want to, to make that suggestion, we're open to that. We cert, we would like to get the S.P.U.D. approved to allow for the non-accessory sign, but we're, we're certainly willing to participate in the, in the enhancement, improvement, and the, and the celebration of the district there between Penn and Young's on Northwest 39th Street. So thank you.
Okay. So to clarify, the motion is to deny. We have a second, and so a yes vote is to deny. So let's cast our votes. And the denial passes five to two. Moving on to item seven, which is S.P.U.D. 1135. It is in Ward Two also, so go for it, Councilman.
This is Theresa Tran, and I have the property in 1917, 1923. I want to change the rezon to S.P.U.D., and I want to approve it.
I want to say thank you for calling Ward Two home. And you're doing a hair salon, that's correct?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I'd like to move approval.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any further comments? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item eight is S.P.U.D. 1137. It's located in Ward Six. Councilperson Hammond.
Well, so we're back to another sign.
Yay.
So can the applicant please come and speak to the piece, the TEs that were added by Planning Commission and kind of the history of this application?
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is a bit of a unique application in that if you, if you look at the screen, you see two different SPUDs, SPUD 191 and then SPUD 832. If you were to look at the Scenic River Overlay Design District, you would notice a notch, these two sites in those two SPUDs, both of which my client owns, are not within the district. The last time we came through to rezone SPUD 832, it was a request by staff that we bring it into the district. At the time, my client declined, and we were able, at the city council level, to get it approved without bringing it into the district. And so what is approved there now is a, essentially, an industrial development that would allow for the storage of raw materials 12 feet high. And so what we're seeking to do through this SPUD is bring it into conformance with the Scenic River. So what we have done is changed course. We have now developed an S.P.U.D. that brings it into the Scenic River Guidelines, which would require all development to meet those guidelines, which would require us to go seek approval from the Scenic River Overlay Design Review Committee prior to the issuance of any building permits. In exchange, we are seeking the ability to have one non-accessory sign. I believe, when it went to Planning Commission, part of the reason that they recommended approval is that they did view this as a net positive. Again, what would be permitted now would be 12-foot-high storage of raw material. And so I think it's an overall net positive, and that's why Planning Commission recommended approval. At the time of Planning Commission, there was a request from one of the members of Planning Commission who is in the sign industry, and that is found at TE number three. What he requested is that we add language, that the sign is equipped with light-directing louvers to direct light from the sign toward the highway and away from the neighborhood. We did agree to that. Additionally, in speaking with Councilwoman Hammond yesterday, she asked that we add an additional TE to reduce the knit level to 300 from dusk until dawn. We have agreed to that. We've actually already modified the documents, submitted it to staff. That, because that is an additional TE since Planning Commission, it would require an additional amendment from the council today. So with that, again, I believe it to be a net positive when you consider what the site is currently zoned now, bringing it into conformance with the Scenic River Guidelines. On behalf of answering any questions you might have, we'd ask for your approval.
I have a question. How is that going to be regulated from dusk to dawn?
So the city, the city regulates those. The city code already requires a reduction in the knit level to 500, I believe it is now. And so we're simply further reducing it. And so it would be approved by ordinance. I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to Development Services on how it's enforced throughout the city, but what we're imposing is a further reduction of the nits from what the code already requires.
So again, my question is, how will that be regulated?
City Inspection Services has a meter that they can go out and point at the sign, and it will tell them what the brightness is, how many nits. And if it's over, they're issued a notice to come into compliance.
We do have one person signed up. It's Eric Kayott again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Deja vu. No, I'll keep it quick. Really, a lot of the same points, a couple of extra things. Obviously, it's just a circumvent sign code, doesn't align with comprehensive plan, as we know. So, and this SPUD, under the staff recommendations, again, it said mitigation measures could include eliminating the sign. And furthermore, it actually recommended, it says, eliminate signs, non-accessory, from the list of permitted uses in Section C dot three, which is non-accessory signs from this SPUD. So again, FHWA, there's going to be tons of copycats. We've, I think we've kind of beat that to death. Another thing on here, Riverfront Design Committee, I think that got glossed over, but it was denied six to one there. And I know Planning discussed it, and they thought that it was, they were in favor of the sign, and obviously, they weren't. One of the things Planning asked was, what was the intended use? And it was speculative. There's nothing, there's nothing, nothing decisive, it's just speculative. So primarily, they just want a sign. A couple of other things. So, so this SPUD is already in the Scenic River Overlay. The SPUD to the south is what's not in the Scenic River Overlay, if I understand this correctly. And I don't think the document actually says that SPUD 832 will go into the Scenic River Overlay. So, but again, both of those SPUDs, if you go look archive them, I think back in 96 and then 2015, they were requested to have billboards on them, and they got denied. So, all right, that's what I leave with. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks.
So how far south does the overlay extend south of the river? Because this is on 13th Street.
I believe this would be the southern line. And he's incorrect. This is not in it, neither is 832.
Yeah, okay. What's this blue line just above where it says Stockyards? What does that blue line represent?
I believe that is a little channel that comes off of the river.
To 13th Street. Can we enlarge this?
Cindy, you might go to, I do have an exhibit item. And so you'll see on the Google Earth image, I have a pin on proposed location, and just to the left of that is that little channel that extends from the river. And then there's two others that are in closer proximity to the river, which I believe to be Lamar billboards. So, I mean, it.
Yeah. I don't want to tie up too much time, but I, I question how much that channel will be used in terms of.
Oh, I don't think it's a usable space. No.
Yeah. I mean, this is clearly focused on the interstate.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to be facing the interstate.
Yes, sir. It'll be angled in a manner in which it will be shielded away from residential.
Thank you.
I am curious, with the Riverfront Design Committee, why they did request denial of the application?
I can't speak for them. I'm not sure. But at the time of, of the Planning Commission, it was the Ward Six Planning Commission member that moved approval, with, with the understanding that, you know, this, this gets to what the city had requested all those years, years ago by bringing it into the regulatory authority of the Scenic River Commission. And getting rid of what is right now, I would submit a perhaps bad use for the area with the industrial nature of what is allowed now.
So do you not present at the Riverfront Design Committee?
Yes, but I mean, I, in terms of, I don't know why the particular members voted the way they did. They are quasi-judicial board, and so I'm not allowed to visit with them prior to a hearing like I am through a legislative process here.
There was no discussion on the floor about it?
Well, they asked us to agree to the condition. The condition is remove the billboard. And I explained that, you know, the only reason we're here is to get the billboard, and then there was a vote.
Thank you.
So generally, I want us, and I know that staff is working on this code update, and I really do want us to get out of the business of approving billboards, but my main concern with this billboard in particular was the effect on the neighborhood. Other than safety, I quite honestly don't care what a highway looks like. It's an interstate. And so that, and I do, I do want to move, so I'm inclined to move for approval on this, but I first want to move to amend the SPUD to include the TE that was submitted, or to accept the newly submitted SPUD from this morning. So I don't know what language that needs to be. But is that, does that cover it?
Does that?
Yes.
I think it just needs to be a motion to amend to include the additional TE stated here today.
The 300, the 300 knit thing?
Yes.
And again, because my, my main concern was with the, just the bleeding of the light on the, to the neighborhood. So the fact that Planning Commission did add those louvers and then just bringing the light down.
Yeah.
So I will move to amend with the additional TE of the amended knit level.
All right. So we are voting on the amendment right now. Cast your votes. That amendment passes unanimously.
And then, again, I will move for approval on this because I do see it as an overall positive, getting that area under the, the Design Review District for potential going-forward development. I think there's some better opportunities that we have to make these areas a little more friendly to our residential neighborhood. So, that I move for approval.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. All right, I think we're done with signs for the day. Item nine is S.P.U.D. 1151, and it is in Ward Seven.
Has anyone signed to speak?
Yes. Do you want to hear them now?
Yes, let's hear it.
Okay.
Yes, Russell Britton, 4619 North Santa Fe. I currently own environmental testing, oil lab, and cannabis testing, which we do out of the facility at 4619 North Santa Fe. I've been there since 2000. Good, strong business. We're growing. The building and property at 6401 North Kelly became available, and I bought it to, because we're outgrowing the building that we're in. So I do not plan on moving everything. It's a very small building, just small portions of the testing that we do to that facility. I plan on completely remodeling the facility, the building, it's just about a thousand-square-foot building, completely remodeling it and really sprucing that corner up a lot, I think.
Well, I'll say, the neighborhood already is spruce, so I'll say that. But I appreciate you for attempting with that. But what I, what my question is, is when we're looking at that corner, and I know we had a meeting with the neighbors on last, last week, last Monday, so I want to clarify again that this is strictly for what kind of testing, as you advise the neighbors?
Yeah, I do soils, waters, oils, a little bit of everything, environmental, oil field, and cannabis.
Okay. And how much cannabis did you say you would be?
Cannabis is less than 1% of my revenue.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Very small percentage.
I just wanted to make sure we had that again from you.
Yes, ma'am.
In your voice.
Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate that. As we're looking at the rest of this in the two areas, that's what I was kind of questioning because of the following uses that shall be permitted. And I know you have said you don't know what you're going to do with that property. So with that, I'm curious as to why we need all of these uses for it. So with that, I would like to probably amend and take out some of those uses so we can, until we understand and figure out what you would like to do.
Sure. Are there, which ones are you interested in removing?
Participant recreation and entertainment indoor.
We can take that out.
Also, as far as community recreation, I'm curious as to what the plans are for that.
We can remove those.
The one that I do see is retail sales and services. How restricted can that be?
So retail would be restricted here based upon sheer size and what parking counts would be required?
Okay. Because I, I guess my, my concern is, I just want to ensure that if we're allowing these uses, that once it is passed, the things that we say we're not going to do, they really don't get done.
Absolutely. Yeah. So we, we'll take out participant recreation, we'll take out the two community recreation, excuse me, the three community recreation use units, which would leave administrative offices, the, the personal services, the research, and get it, I think, more down to what you're, you're looking for.
Okay. Then with that, do we really need retail sales and food and beverage retail sales?
Food and beverage is a little grocery store. We could certainly take that out. I mean, retail sales, I don't know that he has any plans. I would just note that it, because it is at Kelly and 63rd, it potentially would have some retail ability to generate sales tax because of proximity to the highway, but if that, if that is a big concern, that.
Obviously, it has an investment that makes the property more valuable to me, but it's not.
But if you're testing, I mean, is that, that's what you're doing anyway?
Sure. So his facility will be in the current building. The, when you, the image you see on the screen says vacant, it's really just getting some uses to be able to develop something on the vacant tract.
And again, that's where my concern is.
Sure. So I mean, are you okay with deleting retail?
Literally across the street, we have a medical marijuana dispensary.
Sure. We could, we'll take out retail.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And food and beverage retail sales.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, with those amendments, I move for approval of this application.
So we need to make a motion for the amendment first, probably, right?
So I'll move to, with the amendments for this application to be approved.
Motion is to amend the S.P.U.D. Cast your votes. Amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you. With that, I move for approval of this application.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Okay, moving on to item 10, S.P.U.D. 1152, which is in Ward Six. I don't think so, no.
Well, so this is just really a rezone to allow for both a single family and a duplex, and I will move for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, S.P.U.D. 1154, which is in Ward Four.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Has anyone signed up? Francis?
No.
Is Mr. Grubbs present? I just, I just wanted to verify you're good with the TEs on this, the first two?
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road. On behalf of the applicant, I am good with the TEs. We, we agreed. We agreed to the TEs in Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, I would move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9B1, which is an amendment to the master design statement, and this is in Ward 7.
Yes, this is amendment to the master design statement to require sidewalks on North Lindsey and provide pedestrian paths from North Lindsey to the grocery store and wellness center to reduce the number of drives on North Lindsey from three to two, as shown by this exhibit that you see. And also, it's saying to prohibit drive-through order window within 150 feet. So I do want to make a clarification that there is going to be a drive-through pharmacy on this property, although we see a drive-through order window, it will not be a drive-through order window, but there will be a drive-through pharmacy. So I just wanted to make sure we had that clarification. And this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval, and this is going from C3 Community Commercial Development to PUD, a planned unit development, and this is something that we are extremely excited about for our grocery location, our wellness center, and also the corporate headquarters for that grocery store, and something our community has been asking for, for over 25 years. And also Wellness Center, we've been asking, they have been trying to figure out for quite some time as well. So with this, I will ask for, that we move for approval of this application.
Yeah, so the, so I'll take that motion as to the amendment of the master design statement, which is item B1.
Yes, so with item B1, the amendment, I move for approval.
Yep. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And for item B2, the ordinance on final hearing recommended for emergency approval, I move for approval.
And Vice Mayor, I understand the easements have been submitted.
Okay, cast your votes. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And do we need the emergency? Because that's usually a separate vote. We don't need the emergency on this, do we? We do need it.
I think that's what I asked for.
Seven present, and we do not have seven.
Okay, well, we can come back and do that later, right? Okay. All right, moving on to item C, 9C, which is a S.P.U.D. 1140, it's in Ward 6, and there's also an amendment to that also. So, yeah.
Okay, so do we have anyone? It looks like we might-
We do have somebody signed up, yes.
Yeah, can we have the applicant come forward and explain the amendments as well?
Good morning again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an S.P.U.D. application that, when you got your packet, undoubtedly added at least an inch and a half to what you received. At the time of filing, the S.P.U.D. would have allowed three homes to be built where once stood one. Now, it is two legal lots. At the time of Planning Commission, it was a lengthy discussion, there was a request to modify it to two, and at the end of the Planning Commission, we did modify the application to move it to two units. It is my understanding that by doing the two units, it, the opposition is no longer here actively opposing it. So one of the things that you'll find with this project is it is in Linwood, and Linwood has very strict guidelines as it relates to setbacks. And so what we've done here with the architects is make sure that we have maintained the historic setbacks, both front yard and what ends up being the side yard along Woodward. So the UCD for Linwood requires a 35-foot front yard setback, which we do maintain, and then we treat this second home as a side yard to keep that historic developed block pattern. One of the things that these UCDs intended to do was to ensure that the historic development pattern remained unchanged, and so it's our opinion that we've been able to accomplish that here. There are numerous examples, I'm happy to provide an exhibit if you'd like to see it, of similar development pattern like this in Linwood, where you have single family, you've got duplex, you've got multi-units on a lot. So I think by bringing it to two, we've provided a development that will be contextual, it will be sensitive to the neighborhood. The architect took great length to design a product that is architecturally and time-sensitive in keeping with what you might expect to see in Linwood. And so with that, it was recommended for approval from Planning Commission. After Planning Commission, we continued the dialogue with the neighbors through their attorney. One of the things they wanted to see is, what would they, what would they actually see? So we spray painted kind of the building footprint out on the site so they could see what those setbacks would look like. We modified the PUD to limit it to two units, limit the maximum lot coverage, provided revised renderings. And after all that, when I spoke to Mr. Groves, he did say that they will be here, but they are not here in protest. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I want to thank the neighborhood for the time and effort to work through this, to arrive at what I think is going to be a wonderful opportunity for Linwood.
Okay, we also have a person signed up, his name is Travis Roach.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak with you today. I am a member of the Linwood Neighborhood Community. I've lived there for two and a half years, this is where my wife and I bought our first home. And I think what David Box just presented to you is an unfair assessment of how this process has gone. Our attorney is here, and he mentioned that we are no longer in protest of this development, and that's simply not true. What that means is that we are not going to take this further onto District Court, we're not going to try and sue at a higher level, simply because we can't afford it. We have an entire neighborhood who has come together to fight a spud in a neighborhood that has a UCD, and we've spent thousands of dollars against this effort because it takes away the character of this city. It goes against Oklahoma City's own Historic Planning Commission. In that report, there is lobbying for new efforts in new historic districts across the city, including Creston Hills, and poking holes in our UCD takes away the covenant we've had with the city for decades, the effort that we've put into maintaining and helping this neighborhood, whether boom and bust from the 1920s. So this opposition, this means that we're not going to take this further. David Box and his client, they can write this off, this is a business expense for them. This is not a business expense for us. They can subsidize this across the four other developments they put at McKinley that are going to net about $1.2 million if you add up the four houses times $300,000. What they have done is come into our neighborhood and knock down an affordable home to put up two unaffordable homes. They told us in the initial meeting that their target price was about $300,000. The developments they've put that look just like this on McKinley Avenue range from $272,000 to $300,000. This is substantial, this is the type of home that I could not afford in my own neighborhood. So what's really at stake here is whether or not we grant a spud, because the UCD, as platted, as David Box mentioned, does allow for two developments, which means they do not need a spud to develop two dwellings in our neighborhood. That is not what's at stake here. What's at stake is a difference in land use. The current UCD allows for 35% land use. What they have been willing to accept is 50% land use. Now, on a 7,500 square foot, 75,000, excuse me, 7,500 square foot lot, that amounts to an additional $223,875 to the developers at the price per square foot they're charging at another property. I do not believe that this council should allow the past and the future of Oklahoma City to depend on the whims of developers and people that David Box represents. That goes against the historic commission, that goes against what this city has said, it goes against the constituents who live in that neighborhood. More than 60% of people within a 300-foot radius were against this development. There are many more, as I'm sure you're seeing in there, who've signed petitions against this. This also goes against the some 80% in the Plan OKC survey of people who would like to see further historic development and stopping from affordable homes being knocked down to put up unaffordable homes. It simply goes against what we need to be doing as a city to preserve these spaces. And let me tell you one more thing that comes from my own professional background, is that preserving these spaces actually has spillover benefits. So as we preserve historical districts, you see new development entering into communities on the boundaries of these historic developments. To our west is the Windsor District, this is an area that I think the city has put a lot of effort into to trying to develop. This is the exact kind of development that will not be going in there because they're targeting our neighborhood that can charge a higher price per square foot. Now, a good case could be made that the Windsor District could be made historic. I'm for that, that's fine. But what I'm saying is that by providing these boundaries and preserving UCDs and covenants like that, we are helping communities just on the edges. You can look at their other development on McKinley. It is just north of Putnam Heights, it is just west of Crown Heights. They've chosen to invest their money in an area that has some, let's say, touch-and-go areas, that there is a need for urban infill in that area, for sure, there are vacant lots. And that's what's happened. By preserving those historic areas, you've incentivized investment at their boundaries. You can do the same here for us. There does not need to be a hole punched in a UCD for $200,000 to a developer, as this will be the precedent used in any future case in any future historic neighborhood that you see. This is going to be the one that they come and say, well, you granted a spud in this case. They don't need a spud to develop two properties. They need a spud to develop about 1,000 square feet more of home. That's it. That's all they're doing it for. And so with that, that's all I have to say, but please do not take our lack of protest here as tacit agreement to this. It's defeat. We're David and Goliath. This is a neighborhood going up against a developer whose other properties are about to net him $1.2 million. It's hard. Thank you.
May I have your ear?
Sure.
Good morning. Eric Groves, attorney, I represent the Linwood Urban Conservation District. I am their spokesman, authorized by them to say what I'm going to say. We contested this vigorously at the Planning Commission level, and following, and at that time, Mr. Box, representing the applicant, agreed to the TEs in the staff report, which included reducing the number of houses from three to two. That also required there be compliance with the UCD ordinance. Since that time, the master design statement has been amended, and the most recent version is November 7, 2019. Mr. Box has been providing me with the various provisions and the attachments thereto, which include a site plan and elevations. We are not here today to support this, but we are also not here to oppose it. And the reason I say that is, the way we see it, this is the best we're going to do. The issue here has to do, it's a legal issue, and it has to do with whether an S.P.U.D. can supplant the regulations of a UCD. And our position is that once an urban conservation district is in place, the language, the ordinance language, does not allow an S.P.U.D. to come in and override those provisions. But the Planning Commission seems otherwise. The Planning Commission and its council, at the hearing where we thrashed this out, said, no, we think that an S.P.U.D. can overcome a UCD. Well, that's a legal issue, and it remains to be seen when and how we will resolve that. By not opposing this today, we do not waive our right to challenge that opinion in a different forum, because we feel that it badly threatens the viability and the future existence of UCDs. But that's another issue. We have limited resources, and my client has instructed me to say that, you know, we don't particularly like it, but we're not going to fight another battle on it today. The other gentleman who spoke is not my client, not within my control, the position I'm giving you is the position of the neighborhood. Also, we understood that the council member for this award was unable to vote for three, but would probably vote for two houses. So we took that into account too, and we made our decision. I'm pleased to answer any questions that the council may have.
Eric?
Yeah, I have one. So what could be done if they didn't use the spud, but just came in and built single-family homes? Would the size of the house be reduced or something?
If, after they demolished the first house, and they wanted to do something else, they can do what they wish, so long as they comply with the development regulations of the UCD. Now, that's an interesting thing, actually. The Linwood Urban Conservation District has several standards about frontages, a 35-foot, or rather, setback 35-foot frontage, and that's consistent with the tradition of lawns in the neighborhood. And also, there's a requirement about the frontage, which has to be 50 feet. The provisions of the original plat are incorporated by reference into this UCD, which is kind of interesting, because it's an ancient plat. But, so the answer to your question is, they can come in and do whatever meets the standards of the UCD without a spud. But in order to do this, they need a spud.
I'm not trying to pin you down or anything, but would you say that the biggest modification they could use, that they could perform with the spud versus not using a spud, is the distance from the curb, the setback, or is there something else that they're able to achieve?
Well, we really have two things to deal with. Oh, go ahead, JJ.
Under the current zoning, they can only build one single-family unit, so they need the spud in order to do two units.
So two units are being built on one lot?
On two lots. The way this, JJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this area, as originally platted, was built out, it said you have to have a frontage of 50 feet.
Uh huh.
But you know how these old plats are, they were often 25-foot per lot. So in order to comply with the 50-foot frontage requirement, you had to have two lots. So most of the single-family dwellings in Linwood are built on two lots, one house on two lots.
Oh, I see.
And that's what the situation was when Omega came along and bought the old house.
So they're building, or they're proposing to build two homes on-
On two lots.
On two lots.
Yeah, it's actually two lots. They're pretty much all that way.
I'm just, okay, go ahead, Kenny, I'm sorry.
There's, before they take a vote, there's one point of clarification the city clerk needs. I think there was a 63% protest, is that correct? JJ?
It's a 7 out of 9 requirement. But I'm not standing here asking you to deny it, you do what you think is right. I'm here to tell you what the underlying problem is. I mean, we have an understanding, we're not going to support it, we're not going to oppose it. The underlying problem is the legal issue, the difference that we have with the opinion of the municipal councillor and the Planning Commission, is do spuds trump UCDs? We say they don't. We say you can't take, pick off individual lots in a UCD and use a spud to get around those UCD requirements. That's our issue to be fought another day.
But you're not withdrawing the protest?
No, we are not withdrawing the protest, and I'll tell you the reason for that, because David and I talked about it yesterday. This may be litigated, in fact, that may be the only way to solve this problem, unless the council wants to amend the ordinance in question. And if it has to be litigated, I don't want my opponent to come along and say, well, you withdrew the protest, and then characterize that as an admission against interest. That's what I told David yesterday when he asked me to do it. I'm not going to put myself in that position, so the protest is not withdrawn.
Okay, either Eric or David, do we have access to photographs of houses surrounding this area? These two, can we just see some? My question is, it looks like, from my limited perspective, that this might be an upgrade in terms of the housing in the area, and, but we're fighting against that. The concern I have, if we tried to shift this into another area of Oklahoma City, say, just immediately south of Capitol Hill, immediately south of Commerce Street, we need those types of new homes to help solidify and ignite some development in that area. We need people making that kind of investment.
I agree with you, Councilman, and there are plenty of areas on the north side that are the same. There's just one key critical difference, and that is that this area has an overlay district- district called an urban conservation district. It's been there for 40 years. It has a steering committee, and there are, what, I think 11 different urban conservation districts in the city. Our question is, are we going to maintain their viability or allow them to be overcome by studs, spuds, where you can pick off lots one at a time? We believe in infill development. Don't get me wrong. Not only in this area, but other areas, so long as it does not destroy the viability of the UCD. That's the distinction between this case and many others.
I'll add, if I might, that, so, he's correct. There's multiple UCDs around the city, and the Gatewood UCD in particular has had several different SPDs come in to approve developments similar to this. And so his, we disagree with his contention in that the UCD was approved by ordinance. A spud, if it's approved, is likewise approved by ordinance. The council has the absolute legal authority to do this. As it relates to his admission against interest, his opponent in that fight wouldn't be me, rather, it would be the city, presumably. So I understand his not willingness to formally withdraw the protest, but I hope the council has heard him, that he's not...
But you could intervene, David.
Can I have JJ come forward and speak to what about this spud might affect the UCD?
But may I respond to one part of that? Would you mind terribly if I did?
Please do.
He mentioned Gatewood, which is a UCD just like Linwood. Here's the thing about UCDs. Our ordinance scheme, which came into being back around 1980, has a general ordinance that governs all UCDs. Okay? But then each UCD has its own specific ordinance. So you've got the general overarching ordinance for UCDs in general, and then you've got UCDs that are specific to certain neighborhoods. Well, they're all different. If David came along with this project in Gatewood, there'd be a whole different set of standards. So Gatewood does not serve as an analog here. Gatewood's different. Linwood has its specific standards that are based on the history of that particular area. Gatewood's different. The other ones are all different. There's no two the same.
Eric, so here's a consideration. First of all, looking from a current homeowner's perspective, this type of development is going to certainly be different than the existing homes, but I just can't see it do anything but increase the value of that property. So the current homeowners are benefiting from that perspective. Having development like this come in, it's going to increase the value, because quite honestly, if you look at the photographs of these existing homes, it's not an area that I'd be too interested in living in as they currently stand. But here we go with this new development.
I'm just going to have to interrupt you for a second and take issue with that, because if you actually did go to Linwood, there are certain homes that don't fit this type of architecture, but much of the neighborhood has beautiful architecture, and I just really, like, insulting where somebody lives like that, I just, I have to defend neighborhood.
I'm not insulting them. I'm comparing those renderings with the pictures we have in front of us.
Well, councilman, councilman...
And then to put a value judgment on it...
We're, a couple of things. We're going to, we still have the site plan stage, and David and I will work out the architectural details and stuff. We never complained about the architecture, councilman. That wasn't it. And we never complained about the, these will not be inexpensive homes. And they may raise the value. You could be right. What we complained about is, we have a law that we think should be respected. That's, because if they can breach it here, they can breach it elsewhere.
All right, I think, yeah. I mean, we just keep going back and forth, but I'd say, Councilwoman Hannah, what do you?
I wanted to ask JJ to speak to what about this spud, I'm trying to think of the word, would not be in conformance with the UCD, I think is what I'm trying to get at.
This spud conforms with the UCD but for building setbacks. The Linwood has specific building setbacks. When you split the property and build a house behind, then woodward becomes the front yard, which would require a 35-foot building setback. So that's basically the difference.
I just have two real quick questions, if you don't mind. One is, isn't the UCD kind of doing its job, and that's why we're here, trying to do a spud? Because without the UCD, right, they'd just go in and build whatever they wanted. So to me, the value of the UCD is, we're having this discussion, we're looking at renderings. I mean, we're doing a deep dive to say, "Does this house work on this lot?" That was it.
So, yes, to that point, when you look at the UCDs as a whole, what they really have tried to accomplish is maintaining the historical building setbacks for the developed pattern. And so what Mr. Channell is talking about is, you know, the second unit actually fronts woodward. We are treating the front yard as a side yard setback to maintain that building line. Otherwise, it would be a 35-foot setback, which would disrupt the building line, and it would, you know, appear to be that missing tooth in the development pattern. And so by modifying the front yard setback for this one lot, actually further meets the intent of the UCD by keeping that developed pattern in place.
Makes sense.
Well, so I'm going to just chime in. So I find myself in a funky place with this, and I expressed this to the neighborhood representatives when I met with them a few months ago, because I am, I love historic neighborhoods, I love historic architecture, and, but, at the same time, when we think about our history with things like UCD and historic preservation, there's some history that comes along with that that is not so, is not so pretty, I guess, I would say. So a lot of the, and, a lot of the zoning that we currently use today, single-family, the setbacks, the lot sizes, those things were specifically put in place in well-documented history to exclude neighbors from certain neighborhoods after race-based clauses in neighborhoods were considered illegal by the Supreme Court. So on one hand, I am not happy that a home was demolished to make way for two homes that will probably make a developer a nice profit. However, at the same time, given that the way that the, going down to two and decreasing the density on the two lots, and maintaining some of those, the specific character of what makes that neighborhood beautiful while also eliminating some of the barriers that have, that have kept certain zoning, or has allowed certain zoning to keep people excluded from neighborhoods. And the Linwood Neighborhood Association has done an amazing job of preserving and beautifying their neighborhood. They have so many beautiful homes. Let's say, I went to their picnic in June, a real sense of connection and community in that neighborhood. And there is a mix of duplexes and single-family homes and folks from varying income levels. So I want, I want to support the neighborhood and what they're doing. But at the same time, like I said, I think there's a space for a development like this to conform, to continue to conform with, with the architecture, with the historic nature of the area, while also allowing for development and infill that maybe pushes back against the not-so-pretty history of some of, some of our zoning and some of our overlay districts. So I'm going to move for approval for this, for this item.
Okay. Do we have a second? Are there any other comments or questions?
We need to approve the amendment.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Yes, I would like to, motion to approve the amendment that brings the application from three homes to two.
Okay. We'll cast your votes for the amendment. Passes unanimously. And then, I need a motion for item two.
And then, so I will move the, to approve the application as amended.
Yeah, and there does have to be seven votes because of the 63% protest. Cast your votes, and it gets the seven required votes. Oh, yeah.
That's for you, David.
Yes, thank you all for your attention to all of this. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we need to do emergency on this. Okay, now that we have all seven of us in here, we can go back to item 9B2, and we need an emergency vote on that. So if somebody would like to make a motion on that.
Move for approval.
All right, cast your votes, and there's the seven required votes for that. Okay, moving on to item 9D. These are ordinances on final hearing. It's closing, first one is closing a right-of-way in Ward 2.
Is anyone here to speak on this?
Nobody signed up.
I'd move approval.
All right, we have a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item D2 is closing a portion of Rockwell Avenue. It's in Ward 3.
Is the applicant present? Unless you have something to say, the Planning Commission approved this unanimously. It's a way to extend the life of the waste management dump out there. And unless somebody has a question, I move for approval.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9E is an ordinance on final hearing. I think it's related to events. If anybody has any about the river, you want to give a quick little summary on what that is? No? Okay. Does anybody have any questions on it? If not, I'll look for a motion. Okay, cast your votes on E1. Passes unanimously. Moving on to E2 is a resolution approving some revised rules for the River Corridor. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item F1 is a public hearing regarding the Uptown 23rd Business Improvement District. I don't think anybody has signed up. Oh, somebody is here. Okay.
Yes. My name is Riley Bailey. I'm the executive director for Uptown 23rd. So first off, it's truly an honor that we made it to this final step in establishing a business improvement district. The Uptown District Association has been working towards this for several years, and we see this as the next step forward for the growth of the district. Many districts in Oklahoma City function as bids, and we believe this is the best mechanism for growth and long-term sustainability in Uptown. The services the bid will provide include bi-weekly sidewalk cleaning, landscape maintenance, annual power washing, security on the weekends, and the like. And because of the dedication to the stakeholders' involvement, the Uptown bid will be overseen and managed by a bid committee that will be solely made up of property owners within the Uptown bid area, and they will determine the services and budget the bid will provide. So, thank you.
Okay, so we will need a motion for the resolution adopting the assessment rule for Uptown 23rd bid.
I'll second it.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. On to another ordinance on final hearing. Oh, it's, this is the, same thing for the Uptown 23rd, so I'll look for a motion on that. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then, a resolution approving the sole-source professional services agreement with Uptown 23rd Street Association.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 9I is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on December 3, and final hearing December 17.
Good morning. This is simply an amendment to our existing disorderly conduct ordinance. One of the things that is prohibited is blocking an entrance. We want to add an exit as well. This came up in a hearing, a challenge to a conviction in municipal court where a person was cited for blocking an entrance. It ended up actually being an exit. That distinction actually went against the city, so we're simply updating the ordinance to include that additional area.
Okay. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and that moves forward. The public hearing will be on December 3, and the final hearing on December 17. Moving on to item 9J1. This is the dilapidated structures list. I don't think anybody has signed up.
Actually, it really is on there twice.
Yep, it will be. It'd be on the dilapidated and the abandoned, probably.
Yes.
Yeah. So which one, which item are you?
Dilapidated.
South Robinson. Okay.
And I believe you have a printout of our application for approval that we sent to the, there we go, yes, thank you. So this is my third...
Can you state your name?
Yes, forgive me. Vicky Van Staverne, 601 Holodale Edmond. This is actually my third time to come before you on this. So you probably remember, this property was badly damaged in the 93 a mile an hour winds the end of August. The second floor was partially blown over. So we immediately took down that second floor because it was unsafe. Concurrently, code enforcement began their condemnation process. In mid-September, we made our application to the Planning Department for design review and approval. There's actually four areas of design guidelines that we have. There's Scenic River Overlay, Western Gateway, Downtown Design District 2, and North Shore. So we had a lot of hurdles to jump, which we did. So a week ago last Thursday, we went before the Scenic River Committee, and they approved our design without conditions. And we have a certificate of approval on that. So it's now in the hands of our structural engineer for redesign. We have engaged Lingo Construction to build this project. They are currently pricing it out. Our next hurdles will be finishing the structural design documents, getting a building permit. Lingo will bid it out. We have to get our financing. Stan Lingo believes that we can start construction January 15. I think that's optimistic, but he's the expert. But in the meantime, the, all of the openings on the street and the sidewalk are boarded up. They always have been. The perimeter, the remaining of the perimeter is fenced, so the site is secure. And then I also want to say, I think it's generally agreed that this is an important project for the city. Where it sits is at the corner of South 10th and Robinson. So when you come over the I-40 realignment, it's the first city, the first building that you see directly across from the Skydance Bridge, directly across from the south portion of the Scissor Tail Park, which is just starting. And it's also the first project in Hubcap Alley, and currently the only project happening in Hubcap Alley. And we're hoping that this will spur future development and other people to take a risk, like we are, to jump out there in this very badly blighted area and try to do something positive for the city. It's the north gateway to that south park. Steve Blackmeyer has done two articles about this property particularly. He also did a blog in OKC Talk, and the comments from the community were very positive. And, you know, that's kind of scary, because comments on a blog are usually pretty scary. So the Planning Department is excited about it. And so we respectfully request that council... And so we respectfully request that counsel deny condemnation of these buildings.
Okay, it's in Ward 7. I know we've deferred it a number of times already.
Yeah, I know he had some questions, so we'll go with that first.
Chad, can you speak to the process of when this started that, to get it to this point on this list? Unlike what, when was it first cited as needing to be abated? How did, what time length, timeframe, what's that been?
Sure. Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. I believe our original notice went out on the 11th of September 2019 for dilapidated structures there on the property. And Ms. Van Staverne is correct in that she's talked with staff several times, and she has received her certificate of approval from the Riverfront Design Commission. She's diligently been working on the project, for sure. The thing is, is we still have two dilapidated buildings here. And that's kind of our stance on it. Still have those issues. She just got approval Thursday. She has some great plans, I'm sure, but doesn't have any building permits currently, anything like that in place. Kind of soon to get those because she was just approved Thursday, like she said.
And what happens if we declare it dilapidated?
Declaring it today, before we do anything else, she'll have 30 days to start with. As long as she's making contact with our department, and she's following through on her part, acquiring those permits, getting a good plan of action with us, we're going to work with her because we believe it's a great project as well.
Okay, I just, when I see that the building's been owned since 2011, and it's just now being worked on, my concern is that people do buy property in these areas that are considered blighted, and then don't do anything with them until... And so the neighborhood around them has to live with that for eight, nine years now. And here we are, finally, we have some fire under us to abate some of these issues. But for eight years, it's just been sitting there. So I don't, that's just my concern is, in continuing this, is if nothing completely negative is going to happen, if we aren't going to tear the building down immediately, I don't see why we don't just go forward with declaring it that way and let them continue working on it in that process, so, sort of.
May I respond to that? Actually, we have been working on this very much since 2011. We started immediately working on it. And if you look at some of the pictures that I provided, you'll see what the building looked like when we bought it. It had been abandoned for about 20 years. Vagrants had been living in there. They had started fires. There were huge holes in the roof, which I have pictures of. The first thing we did was start to clear it out. This building, the smaller building, will be restored to its historic condition because the windows are still there. We took out all the broken and painted glass. We have stripped the brick of paint, got it down to the original. We took the damaged roofs off because it's less likely for someone to want to try to camp out in there if there's no roof on the building. This whole area that you see there was completely full of old toilets, HVAC ducts, PVC pipe. It was won in a mechanic's lean by a mechanical contractor who used it for storage, and I mean, it was chock-full. We completely cleared all of that out. There were four little apartments upstairs, which were completely wet because the roof had enormous holes in it, moldy. There was a tree growing out of the side of the building. The roots went completely through the upper story of the building. It's amazing that a tree could live that way, but there's a picture of that as well. We have spent a lot of time and money over the la, since 2011, working on this property. We were unprepared for the amount of graffiti, theft, vagrancy that was just prevalent in Hubcap Alley. We, at the encouragement of code enforcement earlier, they said, "We want you to board up the overhead doors" that someone had put on the front of the building, which we did. They asked us to paint them, which we did. They asked us to put no trespassing signs on it, which we did. It's unfortunate when it was storm damaged. That wasn't our intention. But we immediately took down what was dangerous, and that's what you see here, is this huge pile of bricks that we intend to use to rebuild the second story. So the two-story building is basically this. It's a concrete structure. Stan Lingo tells us we're very lucky to have that concrete structure because it's sturdy. It has a roof on it, concrete columns, and that's what we will rebuild on. But it's not abandoned. It hasn't been ignored since 2011. But as far as building back, we got it to the point where we could build back by doing all of the deconstruction necessary to get to that point. But to build back, the area had to improve because it wasn't safe. You know, the windows in this building will be well over $100,000. I'm not going to put windows in there when everything that's down there was getting broken. Now that the construction has started on the Scissor Tail Park on the south end, and there's more activity down there, people are now parking on the south side and walking over to the park. There's a lot more activity around, and we're still taking a risk, but we're doing it.
Okay. Do we want to keep it on, or?
What I'd like to do is, I do want to keep it on, but I'd like to defer it till January until we actually see some movement on this piece of property. Because again, I have a concern as well. I understand the plans, but looking at it from the purchase time to even now, and I know that area very well because my father used to take me down there to Hubcap Alley to see his mechanic. So I know that area very well, and it's disappointing to see it in this manner. So is it possible to do that, Chad?
I think the clerk is saying that January 21st might be a good date.
January 21st, yeah. So we'll defer this till January 21st. I want to keep it on this dilapidated list and defer it. But I do hope that you will continue, Ms. Van Staverne, to be in good faith and do your best to get it where it needs to be before January, that January date.
Councilwoman, she stated before she had a tentative state, or a starting date of January 15th. Could we push that back till that first meeting in February?
Yes.
I think that would give her a little bit more time, just in case there's some sort of delay or what have you.
I'm willing to do that, but again, I do hope that we'll at least see some movement to continue that good faith of bringing it back where it needs to be during this time period, till February.
Okay, so I think that date will be February 4th.
February the 4th, that's fine.
So...
So we'll defer, ask for, defer all till February 4th.
All right, cast your votes. That is deferred to February 4th. Now we'll need a motion for the rest of the dilapidated list.
So moved.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Vice Mayor, may I ask our city manager when plans are for the southern portion of the park?
Yeah, so everything's moving ahead with the Southern Park. I think the idea, the plan would be that the park would be completed, the southern portion of the park would be completed in 2021.
We can accelerate that?
I mean...
We just heard some concerns over the conditions of that area.
We're moving it as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 9K1's, Public Hearing Regarding Unsecured Structures. Is there anybody here that needs to speak to us about one of those? Okay? So please state your name and address for the record.
Item S on the 9, or K, brother. 6400 Southeast 55th Property, house and detached garage, and east shed and west shed. I'd like a little more time. I just became aware of this action against the property. And I'd like a little more time to actually be able to address it and secure the property and meet the standards that you're requiring on it.
Okay, it's in Ward 4.
Do you have someone already hired to take care of the necessary repairs?
Sir?
Do you have anyone hired yet to take care of the necessary repairs?
No, sir, I sure don't. I just became aware of it, as a matter of fact, just last week.
Okay. I would go ahead and make a motion that on item S, we'll defer that for two weeks.
Cast your votes, and that item is deferred for two weeks.
All right.
Now I'll need a motion on the resolution for all the other properties. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Then moving on to 9L1's, Public Hearing Regarding Abandoned Structures. We've got item C is the 1100 South Robinson, and then item M, which is the 6400, that I assume we're going to want to defer those as well. But do we have to do those separately, since they're different dates?
Typically, we will, what we'll have to do is, what we'll have to do is, we can't declare them abandoned unless you guys declare them.
Oh, right, okay.
We'll come back next time.
They're automatically taken off that list?
Well, they're not automatically taken off.
Well, they'll come back whenever, whenever the dilapidated and the abandoned. Yeah, okay, got it.
So we won't be able to declare those abandoned.
Okay. Well, if there's no public hearing needed for that, we, I'll look for a motion for the resolution. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Item 9M1, it's a second public hearing regarding the Police Department.
Chief Gorley had presented this and the projects they're doing to the Public Safety Sales Tax at the last meeting, and so this is just doing the second hearing and approval of the resolution to move forward with these projects.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to item M2. It's the resolution amending that, appropriations for that police, for the Police Department, so. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9N1 is a public hearing regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a joint award for the 2019 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant.
Yeah, and I asked Chief Gorley if he could just give a quick statement on what this is, on the grant. It's a, I think it's Edward Byrne Memorial, I think that's right. Just, and it's a grant that the Police Department has used. I think it talks about it in the memo, that over the past years, that a little over $8 million has been received on this and used for different law enforcement purposes. So just wanted to give a quick update on what we're doing with this grant.
Absolutely, Wade Gorley, Chief of Police. This year, as we apply for this grant, one of the things that I'm looking at is the way that we address crime, especially with our new records management system. We're now able to pull a lot more data, not only on the crimes themselves, but the individuals committing those crimes. And so having trained analysts that can analyze that data and help us target, you know, not only specific areas where the crimes are occurring, but those individuals, and how we target those crimes is very important. And so I'm looking at adding two more analysts to our staff. One will be assigned in investigations to help us, as the investigators are investigating and filing those charges, that will help us better identify those individuals and be able to pick them up, serve those warrants, and just have a more targeted approach in how we address crime in those areas, and also using them not only in investigations, but in patrol and other areas of the Police Department, too. So we'll hire two analysts to help us with that.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, I'll look for a motion for the resolution accepting the grant.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9O is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment.
Yes, and Doug Dowler, our Budget Director, had presented last week, or at the last meeting, on just a summary of what we were doing in this. Part of this was the public safety, the amendment that allowed for the police improvements, the building improvements that they were doing. And then there were a couple of issues that were highlighted there.
I don't believe anybody has signed up to, for this public hearing, so I'll look for a motion for the adopting the resolution. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9P is a resolution updating the city's purchasing policy. City Manager.
Yes, so Brent Bryant is here, and Amy Simpson, our Purchasing Agent, to just give us an update on changes that we're making in our purchasing policies.
Yes, for more than 25 years, we've been utilizing statewide contracts, or state contracts, that manage by OMEs at the state. And we do that because of the cost savings. There's a, you know, when you hire, when you buy things at a larger, higher volume, you're able to get a higher discount or cost savings. We've used these for commodities like vehicles, heavy equipment, and even IT contracts. And the state awards their contracts throughout the year, where we typically will award a contract throughout, for a one-year period. And they do it throughout the year. And what happens is that we'll piggyback on that contract, and then it will lapse. And we will get, and they make, when they provide notification to us for the lapsing of it, then we're kind of in a, in a situation where we don't have contractual authority. And what we're seeking to do is amend our policies today, where we can get counsel to approve and authorizations to purchase off of statewide contracts for a period of time. And we'll set up controls where our purchasing agent will monitor those contracts. Amy was just showing me this morning where a contract that was supposed to lapse a month ago, they're going to extend it out another 30 days, but then they're going to bring a new one. And the timing of that and bringing it back to this council becomes cumbersome. And so what we're trying to do is provide, seek your approval to access these contracts for a time period of a year, and then we'll monitor them and bring them to you once they're approved by the state. And if you want to, if you, and Amy can tell you all the details if you'd like.
Yeah, I really do appreciate Amy's leadership in this, that we work to, you know, we try to manage contracts where it's appropriate, where we manage the contracting process ourselves, but where there's opportunities to take advantage of the purchasing along with the state and participate even in their processes, that Amy provides great leadership for us on that. And just updating the policies here to be consistent with how we need to be able to manage these contracts, I mean, these agreements when we buy off the state contracts is very helpful to us.
Well, if there aren't any questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9Q is a resolution adopting the City of Oklahoma City Grant Policies and Procedures Manual.
So we've had this grant, the Grant Man, Grants Manual in place for some time. It helps us to be consistent with how we manage our grants and set standards for what departments' responsibilities are for different grants. Laura Pappas is here. She's our controller. And the Accounting Division of the Finance Department helps to manage this. What we realized through the process of an audit was it was a policy that we had implemented, or a manual that we'd implemented administratively, but we had never brought it back to the council to have the council approve that. And so Brent could just give us an overview here or highlights.
Yeah, what we're looking to do is just get your approval of the Grants Management Policy. The auditors were looking at it, and one of the things they always look at is counsel approve this policy, and you haven't, and we're seeking your approval here today. It does outline it. One of the nice things is the process as to when we apply for grants. Because sometimes when we apply for grants, there's also a city match that's required. As long as we can have controls in place and a process where we can evaluate and know, is there a city, cities, an obligation by the city in order to get that grant? And this is just to formalize that and to satisfy the city auditor, too, so.
If there aren't any questions, I'll move for, or I'll look for... If there aren't any questions, I'll move for, or I'll look for a motion. Cast your votes, that resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Item 9R is a collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9S, I don't think we need executive session on this, so I'll look for a motion on the resolution. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9T, I believe that's same thing, we don't need executive session on it. Passes unanimously. Item 9U, I don't think we need executive session on it either. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9V, I do, I think we do need to go to executive session.
Yes.
Move to enter executive session.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9W, these are claims recommended for denial.
Move the items.
Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 10A1 is a claims recommended for approval. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Moving on to item 11, it's Items from Council. This is a public hearing regarding some of the ordinance, two ordinances that Councilwoman Hammond introduced last week. Is there anybody who has signed up for this, or, okay? Are there any questions that, anything we need to discuss on it?
Your Honor, I missed that session. Did we give a history as to how that law came into being?
There was a little bit of background.
Aubrey McDermott had made a presentation on that. Would you, Aubrey, come out here. Aubrey, can you answer some questions on this? Councilman had questions regarding the history of when the law, the ordinance was first put into place.
Boy, I really, I have no idea when that was first established, but I think that the ordinance that required the permit for the canal was established right after the canal was built. So that's been in place since the very beginning, and I think with the anticipation that when the canal was built, there'd be a huge rush of street performers that needed to be regulated. And since that time, we've issued zero permits for that use on the canal. The other licensing requirements have probably been on the books longer, but I really don't know when they were originally done.
And so will there, will there be a distinction between performers, entertainers along the canal versus elsewhere in the city?
It would just be a different requirement to get the license if they're along the canal, so that the Parks and Rec Director can confirm that they're located in safe places and have those provisions just for the canal area.
But outside of the canal area, there won't be a need for a license if this resolution passes?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why we got that law in the first place.
Well, I do remember last week, you said that we aren't like a lot of the other cities, right? This will bring us into more of how other cities do this.
Right, we really couldn't, when we did our research, we couldn't find other cities that required this extensive of permitting and licensing requirements for basic street entertainment functions.
Will there be exceptions? For example, let's say an entertainer is so attractive or brings in such a crowd that it perhaps blocks a venue, a restaurant, or something, can they ask that person to move?
I would think so. I think that if there's a safety risk from people gathering in a spot, that either the property owner or even the city could ask them to disperse or move to a different location.
Well, would that be included in the resolution, that if it creates too large of a crowd, the property owner or whomever?
Since we're all for public hearing this time, why don't we just get the information back?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you bet.
No, no, we'll just do that, we'll get that information for you, get that back to you before we go to the next meeting.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
I can answer that question.
Sure, yeah.
Susan Randall with the City Attorney's Office. There's already a provision in the amusement ordinance that says that no person shall stand or sit in any aisle, exit corridor, or entrance to any theater show, public place or whatever, while somebody's performing. So I think you could also use that to require somebody not to block entrances.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this proposal, I'm just trying to think when a problem could be created as a result of, out of an entertainment.
If they're, yeah, I can, if they're standing on private property, which is the, where the entrance is, then the owner can have them move or sign a trespass complaint. They can have them move.
Okay.
And then if they're on farther out, blocking it, they're probably blocking the sidewalks, but you can, police officers can have them not block the sidewalk. So there, I think there are already means to take care of that.
That's fine, yeah, well, thank you.
All right, this is just a public hearing, so I don't think we need to take a vote on it. Does anybody else have anything they want to add before we move on? All right, seeing none, we'll go to 11B. It's a resolution adopting the state legislative issues for our state legislative program.
Jane Abraham is here. Jane manages the state legislative program and works with us on our legislative issues. And we have item B and C are on the state legislative program, the federal legislative program that has gone to the Legislative Committee of the Council, and so Jane's going to just give us a quick overview of what's in the agenda.
All right, good morning. I'm Jane Abraham, in the City Manager's Office, and I'll just run through this really quickly. Since it's in front of you, I won't read all the issues, et cetera, but I just wanted to briefly touch on the process that we use to select our legislative program each year. The City Manager sends out a request to the department heads to bring forward any issues that they see with conducting city business that have, require a legislative fix on either the state or the federal level. And then those items are considered by the Council Legislative Committee, which met last month. The committee then makes the recommendations to council, and then staff works with our contracted consultants to secure bill authors and to guide the bills through the legislature. So just to kind of give an idea, these are some of the issues that we had last year, excuse me, that were successful in making it through the process. Updating the, since the liquor laws were changed, we've, there've been several tweaks that have had to happen since that time. And then fixing, allowing us to post agendas electronically, extending lease facilities at the airports from 40 to 50 years. And then, this was not an initiative item by the city, but we were in support of it to extend affordable housing tax credit to Oklahoma and Tulsa Counties. So for the next year, for the session coming up, starting in February, the priority issues for the city that have been identified, and this is one that we have every year, is to have local control over local issues. So there are many things that come forward in the legislature that are trying to preempt cities from doing things, and so that's sort of our defensive posture, to try to maintain local control over those issues that we believe should be handled at the city level. And then to increase funding for transit, which is important to us, preserve funding for the Heartland Flyer, and then to preserve the existing sales tax base, because that's so important to our revenue. So the initiative items that have been brought forward, this, the first one is also a carryover from last year. There's enabling legislation to allow cities to create public safety districts and have an ad valorem fee to be able to fund public safety. And I won't read through all of these, I guess, it's kind of get, kind of, it's been kind of a long morning. So if there are any questions about any of these items, let's see, I'm trying to think if there's.
Jane, I do have one that I see. It's the allow, allow streetcar operator to tow vehicles blocking the streetcar rails.
Yes.
Is that currently not allowed?
It is not. Currently, the operator has to contact the Police Department, and then they can do a citation and have it towed. But what we're trying to do is to be able to speed that process up, because we have, it significantly delays the streetcar when we've got cars blocking.
We talked about this a few weeks ago, that one of the issues that we have right now, that the streetcar operator can request this, but when you looked at, if you looked at the number of cars that have been towed, it's a fairly small number, given the number of times we've had blockages.
Yeah.
Because the amount of time it takes to get the police out there and then get a wrecker out there, that by that time, either the driver has returned, or we've identified the driver, but could still several minutes have passed while we've been blocking the streetcar.
Sure. I hate to delay this, but do we have any statistics, and I don't need them right now, in terms of vehicles that have lost their mirrors or something to that effect by, by blocking the streetcar route?
I'm not aware of any situations where we've contacted a vehicle that was parked that, because, because what will happen is, the operator will identify it, they'll see it, they stop, and now you shut down the system.
I see.
So I'm not aware of any that we've had on our system.
Right.
But I know, I mean, Jason gave an example of one, he had just gotten off the streetcar, looked back and saw a truck that was legally parked, but because they had a large mirror, and the operator cannot leave the car, there's a safety issue, they cannot leave the vehicle.
Right.
So Jason actually was able to go back, fold the mirror in, they could proceed, but things like that will block the streetcar, and until we can identify the owner or get a supervisor out there, it causes continuous delays. So there's a lot of things like this that we try to do to manage the streetcar system better. This would be one where if they could make a direct request to get the car towed, it would still take some time, but it would be faster than, you have to get the Police Department out there, and then you have to call the wrecker.
Okay, well, you know, hindsight's always 20/20. Knowing what we know now, if we could have made those parking spaces further away from the streetcar, that might have reduced the number of incidents, but I certainly think that's something we should continue to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, can we just keep going? So then, sort of the next category that we identify are issues that the city supports, but we're not necessarily initiating legislation in these areas. So there's several items here, retain tools for economic development, that's something that we tend to address every year. Something that's actually new this year is, was brought forward by our Planning Department to increase the apportionment to the Healthy Food Financing Act to address food insecurity and food deserts. This law has been on the books since 2017, but hasn't had very many appropriations to it, so that's something that we encourage. And then items that we monitor, always, every year, we look at, of course, we want to monitor our water rights and supply issues, the state fee structure, and then items similar to the changes in the law for alcohol, now that we've got medical marijuana, we expect that there are going to be bills dealing with medical marijuana along, for the next few years, probably, to try to work out the various kinks in that. So we want to monitor that and make sure that there, what the potential impact is on city operations. Okay, so moving on to the federal issues. Under here, we've got sort of a similar structure, we've got our priority issues. We don't typically initiate federal legislation, so we tend to just focus on like the larger issues that are, that have an impact to, to Oklahoma City. So funding for transportation and transit, of course, very important, the airport. Opportunity Zones is kind of a new program, and Mayor's very involved with that. And then, of course, we encourage our local CDBG and grant programs that are funded by the federal government. And then, anyway, I won't, I won't read through all of these either. I'll answer any questions if anything pops up.
I had a comment, as we're looking at implementation of opportunity zones in Oklahoma City, I know right now, there are concerns on the federal level of how these are implemented across the country, and those who are actually benefiting from opportunity zones. And that's something that I, I would hope, as a city, that we are going to try to be more engaged in when it comes to those who are benefiting from these opportunity zones. And the reason I say that is because there's a grave difficulty in the investment for these areas, because of the, they are specifically, the census tract is technically a lot of underserved areas, whereas, because there's no high oversight locally, in the federal way that its implementation has been presented, there, there's no direct oversight for us locally. And again, I know on the federal level that there has been some talk from South Carolina's Representative Jim Clyburn about how we can address these better to actually benefit the communities that they are in, and that's one of my concerns, again, especially when we're looking at investment for the areas, and we have the most when it comes to opportunity zones that are designated for, for our city. And honestly, I'm going to be very frank, especially our communities that are underserved, our communities of color, it's important for us to have the investment of the same. And it's very hard when you're trying to do that with these opportunity zones, because you can't regulate it. So again, I would hope our voice will be bigger when it comes to how we ask that on the federal level, this implementation is spurred in a different direction.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Public transportation.
Yes.
I love seeing that. What can council do, and maybe even, you know, I'd welcome anybody up here who's an advocate of transportation, I just know that Councilman Greenlaw and I, for instance, serve on the Public Transportation Board. Is there anything council can be doing to help foster that conversation in regards to the needs? Because if MAPS4 passes, that's, as we all know, two more BRT routes, and I think any sort of federal investment, I mean, it's our tax dollars, we're sending them up there, right? Might as well be able to get them back to reinvest in the BRT that's going to go on the northeast side and the south side. Is there anything at all we can do? I know Senator Inhofe's a big transit advocate, I know that Congressperson Horn is as well, I would hope the rest of the delegation is. What can I do? What can we do? Put us in coach.
And I think as, as opportunities arise, so we apply for, you know, several different grants, like under the build grant program and under the transportation bill, so whenever that comes forward, whenever those opportunities come up, then we'll certainly contact council where that will be helpful.
Please do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do. All right. And then the, kind of the final item that maybe require a little more explanation, the mental health treatment options under Medicaid. That's kind of a, there's, right now, in the law, there's a prohibition under, it's like a 16-bed limit for mental health treatment options, but that can be addressed at the state level under a current waiver, so it's just kind of one of those tricky things that we need to dig into should MAPS4 pass, once that becomes one of our areas of focus. And then also, under federal, we have issues that we monitor on a regular basis. Internet sales tax collection was a huge issue for the city for many, many, many years, I want to say like 20 years. So we want to continue to make sure that that continues under the Supreme Court ruling that, that took effect, and then retain tax-free status of municipal bonds, and then maintain our compliance with the Clean Air Act. And then, of course, any issues that affect water and wastewater, because that's another area that's critically important to the city. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thanks. Anybody have any other questions? Don't, I'll look for a motion to adopt the, first, the state legislative program. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Then item 11C is to adopt the federal legislative program. Cast your votes, passes unanimously. All right, we are still under items from council, so we'll go around the horseshoe. Councilman Cooper.
Thank you very much. As you all know, this is Native American Heritage Month, and the state named after, shares, you know, kind of that name, Oklahoma. I just want to spend a little bit of time to address that history. Unfortunately, I didn't learn a lot of it until I started in graduate school and teaching. And so I just want to point people to some sources of information if you want to dig into this history a little bit more. One I would recommend would be the A&E documentary, Christianity, The First 2,000 Years. It's on YouTube. It's six hours long, so you can do what I did, just break it up into two parts. It's the first thousand and the second thousand. But in that second thousand, in that, in that, that's where I learned that when King Ferdinand and Isabella in the 1460s sent people Peninsula, under Catholic Christianity, and kicked out any Jewish person, kicked out any Muslim person, and that's a shame, because Christians, Muslims, and Jews had all been living on the Iberian Peninsula for hundreds of years, marrying friends, neighbors, but they kicked them out and said, "Convert or die." When the conquistadors arrived here, they believed that the color of your skin, the darker you were, the bottom of the totem pole. And if you were not Christian, you also were at the bottom of the totem pole. So when they arrived here and met our Native American neighbors, they thought they were at the bottom of the totem pole and thusly enslaved them. Now, for those of you who already know this history, that's fine, but I just don't take, I take seriously now that if it was not taught to me, then there's a really good chance someone out there watching this might not know it either. So I just want to give you the sources to go see this information yourself. So that specific conquistador part and the Isabella-Ferdinand part, that is in the A&E Christianity, The First 2,000 Years documentary, again, available on YouTube. Unfortunately, this story will intersect with the African-American history, and that documentary speaks to it, but so too does the PBS documentary, Many Rivers to Cross, by Dr. Henry Louis Gates Jr. And in there, he goes to Africa and interviews in episode one called The Black Atlantic, also available on PBS and YouTube. He interviews the descendants of slave owners in Africa. They had, as you might know, no allegiance to each other, it was tribe versus tribe. My culture's different than your culture, my language is different, our foods are different, our clothes are different, our religion's different, and so they would go to war and they would enslave one another. It wasn't based on race, it was based on cultural difference. And they would sell them at the port, Port Loco in Sierra Leone. When the Europeans arrive in Africa, they change the game, and they make slavery based on the color of our skin. That was the, there was a moment in history where we shifted the conversation and said that the color of one's skin made them subhuman, which, as you all know, in this country flies in the very face of our Declaration that says all men are created equal, and in our Constitution. And I know we have not all lived up to that all the time, but it's important that we cite that our founding documents tried to tell a different story, flawed as it was. Unfortunately, when we were enslaving the native people here, and they started dying from that enslavement, a priest, a Spanish priest, started feeling sad for the Native Americans because he realized they were human, but then he heard that there was a place you could go and get slaves who weren't Native Americans, you could go to this continent in Africa, and thusly they brought African slaves here. That's how that happened 400 years ago, 1619. Mumbet, whom I have mentioned to you before, was in Massachusetts, she was a slave right after the passage of the Constitution and the Declaration. She's working in the kitchen, she hears her master and his friends start talking about all men are created equal. She runs away, gets herself a lawyer, cites our very founding documents as the reason why slavery is immoral and thusly unconstitutional. She wins. This black woman who was a slave, Mumbet, won. That is also in Many Rivers to Cross, that's in episode two, opened episode two, in fact. Thirdly, I would want to point you to at the end of the, after the Civil War, there's another moment, coming back to Native American history, these things have this weird intersection between Native American and African-American. I will take you to Standing Bear in 1878, when the federal government had forced the Poncas from their homes on White Chalk Bluff in Nebraska, dumped them here before statehood with no shelter, no food, and a makeshift reservation, and there they were met with malaria, the July Oklahoma heat, and humidity, and it killed them one by one, including Standing Bear's 16-year-old son. And before Standing Bear's son died, he begged his father to bury him in their sacred lands, back in White Chalk Bluff. With his son's remains in a wagon, two horses, and 29 members of his tribe, Standing Bear walked 600 miles barefoot across frozen winter prairie, wind chilled 40 below zero, and they see their own blood in the snow. And for four months, they travel, and finally they arrive at the stockades, frost-bitten, skin falling off, starving, arrested by the U.S. Cavalry for daring to leave the reservation, and they were only two days from their ancient burial grounds. They're arrested, as I said, and Standing Bear stands trial, and he becomes the first American, Native American in a court of law to ask a judge, quote, "Am I not a human being? Am I not a man? Do I not bleed? Can I not bury my son?" And the judge was first to say, "You are absolutely protected under this country's Constitution, the promise of this country's right to self-determination." I don't know about you, but that story, those stories, the intersection of those stories strengthens my, my, my sense of being an American, and it, it makes me stronger every day to know that people before me had it so much worse, and they never gave up, and they fought. And I think during Native American Heritage Month, of any month, is when we should be talking about this history. And we should not be ashamed to look at the bad, because only through the bad and staring it in the face will we create something better. So again, those sources of information were A&E's Christianity, The First 2,000 Years, PBS's Many Rivers to Cross, and if you want more on Standing Bear, there is the Washington Post podcast called Constitutional by Lilian Cunningham, and that's where she goes into an hour-long depth of the Standing Bear history. I'd also thank you for listening to me on that. I'd also like to thank the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce for inviting Councilperson Hammond and Councilperson Nice and myself, City Manager Freeman, to join them and the city of Houston, who I'd also like to thank. We got to go down there and get a better sense of what they're doing in their innovation district and what best practices we might want to be using for ours. I'd also like to congratulate the Britton District for their inaugural, Britton District Day this weekend. It was, it went off without a hitch, I'm so proud of them, and I can't wait to see that area revitalized as well. I'd also like to invite anybody from Ward 2 to join us this Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the Tower Theater for a Better Streets, MAPS-4 informational meetup, where you will be able to meet with city staff and learn a little bit more about how those projects are going to shape Ward 2. And that's what I have. Thank you so much.
Todd?
David?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do want to commend you, we're making good progress so far onto this morning's meeting, so hopefully Mayor Holt's taking notes. This is going to be my last meeting prior to the election for MAPS-4. Recently, the Animal Shelter came out with some information that they anticipate that they will become a no-kill facility with the funding for MAPS-4, the new facility, which is a great achievement. When I came on the council back in 2011, we were around 60% live release rate, so to achieve a no-kill status is, is a great improvement. That is the type of measurable outcome that I've been requesting since we began our discussions on MAPS-4. Most of the other programs, projects have not produced any measurable outcome data. So in going back to the Animal Shelter, that project alone, there are a group of voters who are so motivated by that project, they will vote for the passage of MAPS-4, regardless of what else is in the package, they're just that committed. I understand that and I respect that. There is a group, however, and I fall into this group, that is looking for that same kind of measurable outcome from each of the projects. So if we're talking about the new arena out at the fairgrounds, or the new outdoor sports complex, or the improvements at Chesapeake Arena, we should be provided with measurable outcomes in terms of revenue, expenses both direct as well as indirect. So if we're talking in terms of, say, the Chesapeake Arena, we should be able to see how much revenue that facility is generating, how much expenses we're incurring to maintain that facility, and then what can we expect in the future? Now, with that particular project, to factor in the possibility of the thunder leaving Oklahoma City, I think that's a valid component to include in, in the projections, that's fine. Let's say there's a 60 or 70% chance that the thunder would leave if we didn't make these improvements. That should be factored in, and then we're provided that information. All I'm asking for is measurable outcomes, regardless of what project that we can anticipate receiving. So again, finally, going back to the Animal Shelter, that is how we are going to judge the success of that particular project. Are we able to achieve and maintain a no-kill designation? We do, we're successful. We don't, we're not successful. That's when we're allowed to question, well, what's wrong? What, what prevented us from achieving that measurable outcome? We've got several examples currently with the MAPS-3 projects that we had no anticipation in terms of measurable outcomes. Now, things have not proceeded as we anticipated, but we don't know how to judge whether or not it's a successful program. I'm just going to leave it at that. I, I hope, for the benefit of the possible passage of MAPS, that that measurable type of outcomes will be presented between now and the election date. For that group of voters who are wanting that, myself, there's no particular project in and of itself that makes me say, okay, if this is successful, I'm going to vote for all the package. I want data to help me come to that conclusion, and so far, I don't have it, so I'm in the camp of not supporting MAPS-4 because of that lack of measurable outcomes. So, thank you, Your Honor.
James, Councilman Cooper sort of stole my thing that I was going to talk about, but in light of Native American Heritage Month, I was able to, in the past few weeks, attend a few programs at the downtown library, and I believe there, there are a few additional programs happening throughout the library system honoring native culture and just indigenous, both art as well as music, community activities as well. And then additionally, I was able to attend a forum on missing and murdered indigenous people and what their communities are doing to address and raise the voice of the very high rates at which missing persons cases in the indigenous community are not addressed by mainstream law enforcement. So I, to just kind of add to what Councilman Cooper spoke about, there's three more programs happening at the library over the next few weeks before November ends. One is a basket weaving demonstration that will happen at the Bethany Library. At the downtown library in the next coming weeks, there's going to be a discussion on Chicano culture and communities as it relates to indigenous communities, and then a movie screening of an independent native film. So all of that information is on the library website and social media, but I just thought was, they've been doing such a great job of kind of highlighting and bringing to light some of the voices that Councilman Cooper spoke to. So if anyone does have the opportunity, I was able to attend two of the programs, and they were just really outstanding. So the level of work that the library is doing has been wonderful. So anytime you have an opportunity to go patronize their services, please do, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'd like to say, today, we recognize Women's Entrepreneurship Day, so we're thankful for our women entrepreneurs, and one of the things I make mention of when I say that is the fact that we know by data, African-American women are the highest when it, in ranking as far as entrepreneurship is concerned in our country. So it's, it's definitely very compelling to see women in business and what they represent, especially when they also represent their families at the same time. Also, as, as we were talking about Native American Heritage Month, I think of a documentary I've seen, it's called By Blood, and this one actually talks about the freedmen involvement in the Native American culture, and it is literally based in Oklahoma, as we speak about those interactions of African-Americans and Native American culture. There was, oh, also, Britton District Day. I actually went, and I heard from a couple of the folks that are part of their board that they anticipated, just a few, not, they didn't anticipate a lot of people coming, but they were very surprised by the numbers, there were thousands of people that came out to see just what the Britton District had to offer. And that in itself shows to people's curiosity of the movement of what's happening in that area, and unfortunately, the only thing that did not happen was that area was not blocked off from street traffic. So it was just a little struggle there, and that was because it was recommended that they don't, because they didn't expect them to have the amount of people that they did. So I can say on record, next year, we probably need to block that street off for people when they come to the Britton District. But they had different, different places and all kinds of activities, and they also had a pop-up shop that happened in the theater. So again, it was just nice to see people just curious wonder to see those buildings and have those nostalgic things that came up as far as their remembrance of that area and being children who roamed in those places and those, went opening those doors and seeing what it has become. So I would suggest, if you go to the area, stop by Zero Tolerance Coffee and get a sorati chai with chocolate, it is quite delicious for your taste buds. But again, we're, we're looking forward to all things that are happening in our community, and, and I want to just make this clear as we talk about what's happening in MAPS-4, and there's one particular project in particular that is in litigation. And I, I just want to say, you know, it's very unfortunate that you have the community fighting in the manner that they are when it comes to, to this particular project and the structure and the building itself. But I will say, and I hope I'm not overstating that, because I'm certain in saying, that we have no interest in the city as far as owning this piece of property as it has been presented by someone to say that. So, and with this, moving forward, I intend to ensure and continue to have the conversations to make sure that our city is walking through the process to where we allow community ownership and not the city ownership when it comes to this particular space. So again, that's something that I'm committed to working towards when it comes to redeveloping our communities. And again, as we talk about those opportunity zones, you know, we spoke in August and talked about how we had an investor for our opportunity zone project, well, we lost that investor. And unfortunately, I didn't find out till a month after that we lost that investor. And therefore, there is a concern when it comes to ensuring that we have representation of those type of investments that actually come from the communities that they serve in order for those communities to see the benefit of these things or these amenities coming to the community, to see the beneficial property and not the displaced. of those type of investments that actually come from the communities that they serve in order for those communities to see the benefit of these things or these amenities coming to the community, to see the beneficial property and not the displacement property. So that's obviously, again, when it comes to opportunity zones, where there is a really big issue when it comes to those communities where they are planted, because a lot of our communities are being displaced by them. And it's hard to sell that idea to a community who's already been underserved and already understands what has been told by displacement when it comes to development. So, again, I hope as a council and even our state legislators that we'll continue that initiative, even on the federal level, to how we operate when it comes to those opportunity zones and how we can change that narrative to make it a successful story for Oklahoma City. Thank you.
All right, we're on item 12, City Manager Reports.
Yes, so we have a couple of presentations on for this morning. We had one that was scheduled with Downtown OKC to present, just talk about what they're going to do with downtown in December. There's some confusion on the scheduling, so we're going to bring that one back for December the 3rd, just for them to give us an overview. Chris Varga is here with the Planning Department to give us a presentation. Several months back, we'd had a presentation from Chief Gorley on the issue of the council priority with continuing to pursue social and criminal justice. And there's kind of two facets to that. There's another part of it that he looked at from the law enforcement side, and then Chris is going to help us with looking at it from the planning perspective.
Good morning. Still morning, I think. I'm Chris Varga, Division Head for the Housing and Community Development Division in the Planning Department. So we're looking today at our two main measures that relate to our social justice initiatives that the council established. Our indicators are the number of homeless persons identified during the annual point-in-time count and the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units. So when we look at the point-in-time count, as you know, this was done last January, so most of you have this information by now. It's done each year in Oklahoma City. It's required to be done every other year for providers who receive HUD homeless assistance funding. The Planning Department takes the lead in organizing this effort. We get a number of social service partners and agencies involved, other 35 or so that come together and try and do this large planning effort. It's underway now for the point-in-time count that will be in this January. It's a snapshot in time. It's a one-day count of those that we find in emergency shelters, transitional housing, day shelters, meal shelters, and street counts. It does not include persons that are considered to be couch homeless and they're homeless but temporarily staying with friends, acquaintances, relatives. And we know nationally, the number of homeless, including couch homeless, are estimated to be five to 10 times the countable homeless in the PIT. We know also that couch homeless in Oklahoma City schools have reported 3,200 of them last year, students who are homeless, and the majority of those are couch homeless. So the survey we go to provides information on the demographics, the situations that made people homeless, their mental and physical health concerns and needs, and we establish goals and priorities for addressing those needs through all of our service agencies. So in last year's point-in-time count, or this year's, I guess, we had 1,273 persons counted with 384 unsheltered. So the total count increased by 90 from last year, but was still lower than it has been the last, in three out of five years. But the number of unsheltered persons, remain about 30% of those counted, remains high, and those are persons found sleeping or residing in places that aren't for human habitation. So one of the things that we're doing, obviously, to address it is that we need more low-barrier shelters, and as you know, the service providers, and particularly City Care, is working to provide additional capacity in that area. The challenges that we encounter are a shortage of funding and resources across the board, but still a shortage of low-barrier emergency shelter beds, with the recent City Care proposal to add 200 more beds in, hopefully, early 2020. That should help us quite a bit. The number of couch homeless that are not, the federal regulations and grants are not allowed to be used to address this population of persons, so there's not any really resources. Lack of mental health and substance abuse. We know that the resources that we have for those are decreasing over time, and the need is increasing. We know that about 40% of the people entering homelessness have these issues, mental health and addiction problems. We don't have enough outreach and prevention services. The outreach that we do have is normally done only till 5:00 in the evening and only in certain areas of towns, so we need to expand those services, to have one-on-one conversations with those who are homeless to try and get them to receive and accept services. We also have a few resources that help with prevention services, such as rental assistance or utility assistance programs. And then an overall lack of affordable housing, particularly at the deep end, or what some are calling truly affordable, that's affordable to those that make less than 50% AMI, average median income. So what we do have to work on these problems is our city and federal programs. We received $5.3 million over the last year to try and address some of these problems. The continuum of grant care grants, we work with a number of service providers and issue contracts to them to provide services. That grant is designed to assist persons experiencing homelessness and provide services needed to help move them into transitional and permanent housing. That is a competitive grant that we have to apply for each year as opposed to an entitlement grant. The Emergency Solutions Grant is, provides funding to help shelter services, shelter operations, increase shelter performances, and prevent, some dollars go to prevention of homelessness. HOPWA is a program structured around housing for persons with AIDS. It provides housing and other wraparound social services. And then the city's social services grants that the general fund provides does allow us to address some areas that can't otherwise be addressed under federal funds because of the regulations tied to those funds, so it's more flexible. And so, albeit a small pot, it does provide a lot of assistance in this area. And the city also provides a homeless alliance with money to run the day shelter. Okay, so we also, we provide support through all the grant programs discussed. We coordinate with over 40 other service agencies and governments, some of which we fund, some of which we don't, that we are participating in a coordinated entry system where we're using the same assessment tools and intake tools now for different facilities. They used to all kind of do their individual thing, and then they commonly prioritize those most desperately in need of service and have a common list that they pull the top people needing services off, so that those most vulnerable can get served first. And then we continue to utilize a housing-first approach, which is to get people into housing and then deal with a lot of their other secondary issues. And then this year, we also started the new Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness. That project was set up last summer. A consultant firm, Analytical Insight, was hired last summer and may have been conducting focus group interviews, stakeholder interviews, doing the research on what services are in place and what our needs and gaps analysis is, and developing strategies to address those needs. That task force has met, I think, I believe, once, will be meeting again in early December, and the study is supposed to continue on until next summer. Also, the Continuum of Care Board get funded two new projects this year, which is unusual. We don't usually have funding for that, but HUD provided it this year. And so, one is the Mental Health Association of Oklahoma will expand and develop a new outreach program that's going to span citywide for homeless, including youth, and will operate at later hours. Second one is the Center for Employment Opportunities, the Homeless Alliance, Catholic Charities, and the Department of Mental Health, Substance Abuse are providing a collaborative project to provide a comprehensive package of housing, case management, employment to people exiting Our second indicator is the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units. The basic source that we've used for this is from the National Housing Preservation Database, which is updated three times a year. And then we've also folded in other available data from the Census Bureau, the State Housing and Finance Office, and the Housing Authority to try and get the best information that we can. Basically, federally assisted rental units, there's a number of programs that you can see listed there on your left that provide different types of federal subsidy to these units, low-income housing tax credits, Section 811 housing for disabled. So comprehensively, these add public housing to the Housing Authority. Comprehensively, these provide about 9,022 units this year. And that's a small increase of the rental units compared to last year, but the trouble is that about half of these units have subsidies that are expiring within the next decade, and new units are not being built at the same replacement rates. The demand for affordable housing, and in this case, we're talking about the very, very low-income affordable housing, you can see that for every 35,000 very low-income renter households that we have in the city, we do have 35,000. There's only 12,100 available affordable rental units that are affordable to them. So basically, they're having to double up or have housing burdens or otherwise make Our basic city program supporting affordable housing, we can use some CDBG in certain circumstances, some home funding. We do have owner occupied, we do help with owner occupied affordable housing through our city housing programs. We do rehab, and we do a small number of CHODO redevelopments that are sold to homeowners. We do emergency home repair programs and other improvements, so we influence or make 200 to 300 affordable housing units each year on average. We did also, we have the city's General Obligation Limited Tax Bonds Affordable Housing Program, GOLT, which was established in mid-2018. And as we know, we have funded, at least, we've funded so far, 92 units at the Mount Vertant Apartments to the Community Enhancement Corporation, the nonprofit arm of the Oklahoma City Housing Authorities, but that is a good tool that hopefully will help us in the So, on the federal level, well, federal resources continue to be a topic for reductions, but so far, the Senate and the House have not supported requests for significant reductions or program eliminations. Nationally, there is a need for our public housing capital needs and improvements to make that safe and modernized at $30 billion, and our funding last year on national level was $2.7 billion, so that continues to be an issue. And so, like I said, a final note, should our MAPS IV initiative pass, there will be obviously new dollars for mental health and addiction, and temporary crisis centers, new restoration centers, and dollars for new affordable housing, so that will help the situation. Any questions?
Yeah, can you speak to, what is our, what is the area median income for our metro area?
The area median income, which is a number established by HUD each year annually, is And it varies a little bit on households, so that's kind of, that's averaged. It's probably a household of four. So if you're talking your very low income, your less than 30%, those are those that make less than $24,000 a year. So anyone working for a minimum wage job pretty much is in that category.
And do we have numbers on how many people we think are rent burdened in the metro area?
Number of people?
A number of people who are rent burdened or cost burdened by their housing.
There are some studies, and it depends on the income range. I could give you information on that, but obviously, the lower the income, the higher the cost burden that people tend to feel. But we do have some that are cost burdened, even high income, based on their, and basically, they consider cost burden to be if you're spending more than 30% of your gross annual income on your housing costs, including your utilities. So that's kind of a milestone that is used.
So if, so thinking about someone earning a minimum wage, they're making about $15,000 a year, and so that would be, if I'm doing my cost right, if they're spending more than like $375 on rent, utilities, et cetera, they're spending more than what is
Right.
Is considered affordable in our area.
Right, are considered cost burden, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Good. Thank you.
All right, we are going to, just because of the time, and we've still got executive session, we're going to hold on the recreation presentation, we'll bring that back. The Recreation and Community Wellness Program, we'll bring that back at a later time. I did want to mention, the sales and use tax report is on, had a really strong month for sales tax. We had 6% growth for the month for November, 4% for the year so far. Talking with our economist, he's still cautioning that he expects us to see slowing going into the second half of the year, so I think it's good for where we are right now, but we expected to slow. We did see our first decrease in use tax in a very long time, I think it's like 30 months, we saw a decrease in use tax. The amount that we lost in use tax and the amount that we were over-target in, sales tax kind of offset each other, so combined, we were about $200,000 below target for the two combined. Still ahead of target with sales and use tax for the year, but we're going to expect that to get closer in line as we go through the rest of the year. So, happy to answer any questions, if you have any other questions about that.
Okay, we can move on to item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. We have a few people who have signed up. Just try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. First one I have is Reed Downey.
Members of the council, I welcome the opportunity to be here to talk to you this morning. My name is Reed Downey. I live at 9924 Casa Linda. I've lived there in this address for 11 years. Part of that, I lived at 10,005 Casa Linda for 30 years. I'm a 41-year member of the Brookwood Neighborhood. I am also the co-founder of the Brookwood Neighborhood Association. We have, we were honored with the Best Neighborhood Association in 2016. There's 402 houses in the neighborhood. We have 189 dues-paying volunteer members. Generates about $11,000 a year, which we've used to improve our neighborhood. Now, as to the reason why I'm here this today, on October, on August 3rd and 4th, a new neighbor erected a steel framework at 10,017 Trafalgar, which I found to be out of proportion to the lot as well as the neighborhood. This is what was erected on Saturday and Sunday, August 3rd and 4th. I sent an email to Action Lion asking if a building permit had been issued. On August 5th, I called Building Permits, spoke to Mike Miller to see if a building permit had been issued. No building permit had been issued for 10,017 Trafalgar. Mike sent in on an inspector to the location, and after inspecting the location, the structure and structure issued a violation, CE 1948380. The violation was posted on the front door of the residence and rained there until the next Saturday. Mike said if any further work was started to contact him, and he would immediately send out an inspector. On August 10th, Saturday, a crew did show up. They partially, well, they put up two panels on the structure, and I think they finally took the notice off the front door. Work was stopped. However, work did resume on August 10th. I contacted Mike on August 12th. I let him know that work had resumed, and inspector was sent out, and work stopped. The resident applied to the Board of Adjustment. On September 25th, there was a hearing in this room. this room, I don't think it went well for him because he did not get a variance on the building that he had erected. On October 26th, Saturday morning, work resumed, side panels and roof were erected, I contacted John Wilson, and asking if a building permit was issued since there was no change in the structure, other than the paneling in the roof had been put on. I got an answer back from John, Mr. Downey, I know you, I know he changed his permit to be a carport, regulations for a carport are not the same as for an accessory building, the carport must be attached to the house and must be open on two sides, it is my understanding he is going to make the changes to the structure. This is a view of that structure from my backyard. This is a view of that structure from the street. That structure could not have received a building permit based upon what's required For carport, any person erecting or constructing a carport in whole or in part shall obtain a building permit, shall obtain a building permit before the structure is erected. This person comes in and wants a building permit after a structure is erected. Some of the other qualifications, a carport shall be in an attractive state, in good repair, and in a safe and sanitary condition. Attractive, I don't consider that thing attractive at all, for me, it's an eyesore. Another part, all carports shall be constructed, erected, or installed to conform with the structural requirements of Chapter 12 Building and Building Regulations as amended, and shall have a structural and architectural design and appearance compatible with the primary building on the property. You've seen pictures of it, it doesn't match the architecture of the neighborhood. This is an illegal structure, had the person applied for a building permit in the beginning, he wouldn't have gotten it for the structure he's erected. I don't have a problem with people putting up accessory buildings, as long as they're in compliance with the codes.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I think, I think you've made your point, is there any, I mean, because looking at those pictures, clearly, that doesn't look like it should be legal.
Yeah, so Rick Wickham is here, he's our Assistant Director, Director of Development Services, just give us an update on what you know of the building or the situation.
Well, actually, this is the first I've heard of the building, so I had him run a check for a, for a carport permit in that general area along the street of their address on Casa Linda, we didn't find a permit there, but I didn't have the actual address at that point, so we'll need to go back out, look at the structure, see what's happened, talk to staff.
If we find that it's not in conformance, I mean, do we have a way to force them to take it down?
Well, it sounds like one of the options they have is a good Board of Adjustment, but it sounds like they've already done that, so what we would do is probably, and Kenny might can help me out on this, but we can issue citations to find them and try to get them to come into compliance that way.
Yeah, first need to issue citations, and then after, after two citations, it becomes a Class B offense, which, which means they can, technically can be arrested, and they get a jury trial for that, but after we have attempted to enforce it by a number of citations, if that didn't work, we can, council can authorize us to go to District Court to get it removed. It's just if they don't have a building permit, I mean, that, that's, that's one of your citations right there, no building permit, and I, I don't know if it's too large to be a carport.
It certainly doesn't look like a carport.
Yeah, we would go back out.
It sounds like a car storage.
No, so.
We'd go back out and have staff look at that, yeah, I would say that looks like it exceeds a carport.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at this, and we'll follow up with you and let you know what the status is, appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
This is what the view is from my patio prior to. That's why I don't want that building there.
Yeah. Reed, I do want to thank you for bringing those items to our attention, because you're absolutely right, there's no reason that that structure was ever erected, and as Kenny said, you know, we've got legal requirements, we've got to go through the citations, but eventually, we can actually take the person to court and force them to remove the structure, I believe.
Yes, absolutely, we've tried going to court, District Court first, and the judges will say that, well, you have to try to enforce it through your legal system first before we'll take action, so if we issue three citations and get convictions and they don't comply, then we can come back to council for authority to go to District Court.
I do have one question, so when those citations are issued, can Reed or anybody else from the neighborhood find out about those citations? I know I think they're public notice, but how can they determine when a court date might be rendered?
We can tell them.
Yeah, we'll just contact you, Reed, so you can be at the court hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Marion Cabrera, I think it might be for the same issue.
I live at 10,001 Casa Linda, my name is Marion Cabrera, can y'all hear me? Okay, I live diagonally across Casa Linda from this structure. A carport is, to my understanding, and I think according to the regulations, must be attached to the house and have two open sides, it's neither. When Mr. Davis put that up, he told us he did it to put his RV in, it's, that's his intention, just please, keep that in mind, he's not told the truth from the beginning, why should he now? Thank you, I appreciate you listening to us.
Thank you. Next person who's signed up is William A. Robinson.
On the way up there, I'd like to congratulate you all on the street with your ladders. William A. Robinson, 25, 52, Somerset Place, Oklahoma City. I'm here because I want the council to know about an incredibly dangerous situation on one of our trails, it's the intersection where Portland enters the Hefner Reservation, and where the bicycle and running path crosses that. I'm an expert on the Hefner Trails, forgive me for 60 seconds while I qualify that, if I may, I'm retired, my fun in retirement is competing in triathlon, swim, bike, run. For the last 10 years, I have been on that Hefner Trail an average of at least five days a week, for at least 40 weeks out of each year, 2,000 some odd times around. If you've ridden around, all the way around on your bike, or if you've run or walked all the way around, you're going to know what I'm talking about. If not, I invite you to meet me out there some afternoon. The trail was recently, in this last year, repaved, asphalt, beautiful improvement on the trail, but the negative is, it has increased the number of very serious semi-competitive bicycle riders, they're riding out there without regard for runners or other bikers at about 25 miles an hour. Let me take a moment to tell you why I consider myself to be not only familiar with the trails out there because of the time I've spent, but also, I want you to know that I am a competent bike rider, I'm not just some doofus that went out there and got run into. I have competed in the Redman Triathlon two separate times, five years apart, I have been my age group winner in the Olympic distance, the bike distance in the Olympic is 25 miles, so I know what I'm doing when I'm on the bike. On August the 31st, a Saturday around noon of this year, I've ridden around the lake, I'm tapering for the Redman, I'm not riding hard, I go out another couple of miles, which is usually not the direction I go, and I come back. I, I wish I had the ability to give you the graphics to see on this, but I'm going to try and do it verbally. I'm eastbound on the trail, Portland comes in to the right. My car is parked in a parking lot that's about 30 or 40 feet north of where the trail crosses Portland, I glance to the right, nobody's coming in on cars from Portland, so I'm not gonna hit, get hit that way, glance to the left, nobody's coming out from the playground area, and if you haven't been out there, you need to know that there are a lot of people that go out to that playground area that don't have little kids, I don't know what their business is, but they come that two-tenths of a mile going back out of there at 30, 40, 50 miles an hour, so I know I've got danger from cars. I'm riding, and I'm looking ahead, and I think, okay, I'm safe, I make my left turn to go to the parking lot, the path is about 10 foot wide, right there, I make the left turn, and that is the last thing I remember for about three or four hours, some guy on a bike coming toward me, T-bones me, knocks me out of the pedals on my bike, knocks me to the ground, cracks my helmet, knocks my bike out of alignment, and I'm splattered. The firefighters from the station that's only a mile down come to get me, as far as I know, I'm unconscious, the firefighter's report says, a time or two, I asked, what happened, what happened, so I wasn't totally unconscious. I'm put in, they call the ambulance, I'm put in the ambulance, I'm taken to the ER out at Mercy, I have CAT scans, you know, looking for head, body bleeding, whatever, I've got a gash in my hand, I've got a big old gash on my leg, I think where his front wheel hit me, the helmet is cracked, so I came out of this with, I bought a new helmet, which was probably time to do it anyway. My point is, it is so dead gum dangerous that that trail needs to be redone. I'm a retired lawyer, I'm not litigious on this matter, I assure you, but I went back out there trying to do accident reconstruction to figure out what happened. A bike on that trail that is westbound, that is approaching where Portland goes out, cannot see the intersection for about 30 feet, and the reason is because of this beautiful brick wall that's eight feet tall, 12 feet wide, that has the brass plaque on it that says Stars and Stripes Park, but as you approach that on your bike, you can't, you're at a western angle, the wall is to your right front, you can't see down there, and then it curves, the path curves out a little bit to the left where it actually crosses Portland. If you're doing 25 miles an hour on a bike, and that's what a lot of these guys out there are doing now, you do that 30 feet or so in 1.2 seconds, or check my math, but that's the way I figured it out. This guy was riding so fast, he did not have time to avoid me, he clearly did not have time to put on his brakes, and there was nothing that could have been done about this, except, let me back up, I consider myself to be a very fit individual, I'm conscious of my age, I'm very fast approaching 80, but had I been a child or an older couple, I could very well have been killed. There are people out there walking, pushing strollers, going through that intersection, middle-aged, and it's great to see the people that weren't out there 10 years ago, out there working on their fitness. Our community has been made more aware of the need to walk, run, and whatever, you're looking at me like I'm almost through with my three minutes.
Oh yeah, you're way over three minutes.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I, the reason I come down to council, and I've talked to Doug about this, whether or not MAPS passes, that trail needs to be rerouted behind that sign to the north of it, or something else that you guys or somebody is smart enough to do to keep some child or unfit person from being horribly injured. I had a grade four concussion, the ribs, when you get damaged, and that's what hurt, Bill Cockburn, an XOU heavy weight wrestler, says it takes six to eight months to get those, I'm nine or 10 weeks, and I'm just now getting free of pain, so it hurts like heck, people could have been killed, I'm overemphasizing my point, I'm going to ask you all to please contact somebody and do something about this. If anybody wants to, I'll meet you out there, and I can walk through this with you, I went out there to run Sunday, and I almost saw an old couple pushing a stroller grandparents get hit by a bike, so it's an ongoing problem, thank you for your time.
It is a very busy intersection, yeah, we'll take a look at it, yeah.
Thanks.
Next person is Joey Reardon, who I don't think is here anymore, and then Michael Washington.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Let me say to my esteemed illustrious horseshoe providers, I shall not take long your time because I've been long enough, let me, if I can read briefly, a very inspirational statement that I bring to the citizens of Oklahoma, it reads something like this, and I promise not to hold you long. I am here today in support of saving our Freedom Center from Oklahoma City, you heard me, we cannot allow the city council to steal our historical preservation building, the Freedom Center belongs to all Oklahomans and not just a selfish few who intends to gobble it up for their own sake. Now then, since 1965, Clara Lupa took 13 youth down to the Katz Drugstore, this was after 1958 though, when they actually went to the Katz Drugstore, in 1965, she created what is called the Freedom Center, known today on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, 2609 Northeast 26th Street. She envisioned that little young people would have an opportunity to come and learn about their heritage, their culture, their history, their god, their religion, and anything else that would make them be successful in their adult lives, and knowing that they themselves can be someone and not just everybody else, watch out now, let's get too clear She envisioned that they would know about great black pioneers from Oklahoma and those abroad, she envisioned a place where these young people could come and learn the great things that made them unique human beings, even though told that they weren't. A group of black individuals, however, wants to snatch the Freedom Center from us, yes they do, these individuals were promised $25 million of dirty money to sell us out. If the city got possession of this Freedom Center, they'd have authority to do as they choose with it, and that would be a total travesty of justice to the black community. I'm not gonna stick longer here, they have only eyes set for the millions of dollars that'll be generated each year, a huge dividend and payout to them that they certainly don't want to miss. I asked you where was the city council 10 years ago, when the Freedom Center was in dire need of being straightened out, stand, stood back on, on a solid foundation, dilapidated and ready to crumble to the ground, and yet it took little old me underdog, Michael Washington, even the black faces who wants to sell it, didn't find necessary to preserve the Freedom Center, but I did. Where were they the nine months that I sat alone in the Historical Preservation Commission meetings and Planning Commission meetings? Maybe one came to the city council finalization of it. In closing, too much of our black history has been paved over, trampled on, destroyed, cast to the side, discarded, but you can bet one thing about it, urban renewal, your time has come to an end now, that's right, you're looking at the Don Dada, who will take the steps to make sure of this. Closing, you have allowed your businesses to come in, you conspiratorially have brought your friends in to come in and destroy our historic buildings and monuments, but that is no more, you've wiped out all of our culture, replaced all of our history, took all of our homes, our lands, and everything that belonged to black folk, and guess what? You want us to continue to depend on you so you don't lose money. In last word, the Freedom Center is the last vestiges of the black community that identifies us with our great heritage, it contains history of black pioneers who made the ultimate sacrifice, some even given their lives for freedom, justice, and equality, and it is crucial their lives for freedom, justice, and equality, and it is crucial.
All right, you're, you're over four minutes now.
It is crucial that we maintain our independence. Thank y'all very much, I'll be back.
All right, we have executive session, and we'll be back.